Batting?
Here.
Bush? Chambers?
Here.
Dahl?
Here.
Dunn? Lindsay?
Here.
Stappes?
Here.
We just to the playing of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a board communications. Citizens comments, we have one, Lisa. Lisa Hay?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I wrote down my thoughts again. Before each of you took your seats as board members, you swore an oath to uphold the laws of Wisconsin and the United States. In our democracy, the ultimate authority rests with the people. To set aside last November's referendum would be to undermine the democracy, our democracy, and in my view, would be a violation of the oaths that you all took. While there may be no precedent in Wisconsin, we can look to Great Britain for some guidance here. In 2016, the people voted to leave the EU. The passage of the Brexit referendum was a surprise to many, just as the referendum here in November was a surprise to many. Since then, there's been a surge of those in Great Britain desiring to have a re-vote or to not have the Brexit. Despite the public's current desire to abandon the Brexit vote, Prime Minister Theresa May has held firm. She may not be the most popular prime minister, but she will go down in history as having defended the democratic process. Here is something that she has said that I think applies to all of you. The British people voted for Brexit, and I think it is incumbent on their politicians to deliver on the decision that we asked them to make. People's faith in the democratic process and their politicians will suffer catastrophic harm. We all have a duty to implement the result of the referendum. She is upholding the results of the referendum that passed, even though on a personal level, she may be against Brexit. She is supporting the Brexit vote because she accepts that it's the votes that were cast by the people. In my view, you all have a duty to implement the result of the referendum. Even if you don't like the outcome of that referendum, it's not right for you to negate the votes that were cast in November. If I were in your seat, I would feel that my hands have been tied, tied by the oath that I took. The people have spoken, and to hold a second referendum would, and I'm going to quote Theresa May again, and she said this yesterday, that overturning the referendum would be a subversion of our democracy. Do not subvert the democracy in mineral point. Stand by the referendum that was passed in November.
Thanks, Lisa. Has nobody else signed up, or does anybody else want to comment?
Know that we approve the minutes. I'll sign it then.
Any discussion or corrections, changes? Okay, all those in here who've signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Items for accreditation.
Brad Simonson's here from HSR. He had given us a range of numbers to look at or resolution language, so I may ask Brad to certainly come forward and share what he has.
What I have tonight are a few things to talk about, and I certainly want to get all your questions answered, so you can make some wise decisions for yourselves. I have a building program that I want to go through, kind of a list of spaces and all the ingredients of what we think could be in the building, in a new building. I've got some preliminary diagrams, if you will, very preliminary conceptual drawings to share with you about a particular new building on the site, you know, some good discussion there. And then we can certainly talk about our costs, I've got a kind of a breakdown of some of those costs. And then we had our structural engineer take a peek. We were curious ourselves about your existing elementary school, some of the foundation or water challenges that we're having down there, so I wanted to try to get a better handle on that for all of us to sink our teeth into. So where would you like me, and am I okay here? Because I've got some easels, I've got some drawings. Okay?
Good. Is this chair in your way, Brad? Or do you want to sit in?
No, I'll move it aside so everybody can see maybe, see my big rear. Okay? I'll pass this out. You guys, here, take one and pass them around. I'm going to keep one for myself. Go through this first. My easel's ready, let's go around. Let's make sure it's not much. It's hard to, I want to make sure I don't miss anybody. Okay. The building program we have in front of you, again, is our attempt at taking a look at your facility in terms of size and what the components of it might be. We've boiled it down to, again... I understand you've got about, you know, about 350 students in your building. And we kind of based it on a three-section facility, three sections, meaning three classes per grade level. So if you can, just, I'm just going to go through this very quickly. We broke it down into administration areas in terms of what we think, how many offices you might need, you know, restrooms, staff areas. Comes down to about 4,200 square feet of space in the administration area. And you can see all the little nitty-gritty components to that. We've got early childhood and pre-K, about 3,400 square feet. We're looking at two classrooms there, because we understand your half-day here. We've also, you'll notice a grossing calculation we've used, and this is normal for most all-new buildings, about a 20 percent, we call it a grossing factor. That's for circulation and just corridors. The walls alone in a building, just where the walls sit in a building like this, is going to take up anywhere from about eight to 10 percent of the total gross area, so that's in there too. We've got kindergarten rooms. We're showing three classrooms, coat rooms, breakout space, about 50, almost 5,300 square feet of space there. We get into our first-grade classrooms. Again, we're showing three classrooms with a breakout space of 500 square feet. You notice our classrooms for the littler kids are bigger, and those classrooms, as we get older, typically go down in square footage. We're showing 1,000 square feet here for the first graders, and then 900 for second, third, and fourth, fifth grade. So those are the classroom areas. We're also programming some special education areas, about almost 4,000 square feet there. We've included what we call a STEM or a fab lab, if you will. We, I'll back out a little, because we had, we came down the other day and had a tremendous little discussion with the staff at the elementary school, and they were enlightening us as to some of the things that they thought would be important in a building like this. So we're trying to include some of those things and features in this program. This STEM slash fab lab is one of those spaces. Very multipurpose, kind of a laboratory kind of setting for elementary kids, if you can imagine what that might be like. That would be very flexible and usable by all the kids in a building. Our library resource area, about 5,200. Our PE area, which includes offices, some storage rooms, and a gymnasium of about 8,500 square feet. So the total there is about 11,000 square feet of space. And then our cafeteria commons, about 6,252. Arts and music areas, 4,200. Our restrooms throughout the building, there'll be several, a couple different locations for these, about 1,600, almost 1,700 square feet. And then we have mechanical custodial spaces as well, of about 4,800 square feet. So you see the area there totaling about 72,000 square feet. Give you a feel, for, this building right here is about 818,000 square feet. Your current elementary is about 60,000 square feet, but you're looking at adding another 24,000, so that was going to be about 84,000 when we're all set down. So here, we're thinking 72,000 is a good starting point, and, you know, certainly up for discussion, but we feel somewhat very, very confident that we're real close here. Any questions on that?
The national standard per...
Yeah, national standard, I mean, national standard is crazy. It's a crazy number for us to think about, because standards in Florida or California are so different than Wisconsin. What we see normally is about 150 square feet per student in Wisconsin, and it can get a little higher. Sometimes it can go up even up to 200 square feet in some cases, but, so I haven't even done the math here, but if somebody certainly wants to do the math on that, welcome to...
If your student needs to be 70,000 square feet, your student...
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so we're right in there.
We're running at 350, Matt, in your building?
350 is kind of what we're...
Yeah, 360.
360, 350.
With the 4A and...
And that's a great point, Larry, because one thing we don't have built in here is a whole lot of classroom expansion, okay? We don't, we might want to think about adding one classroom per grade level, maybe one classroom per every other grade level, per two grade levels, just to get a little bit of elbow room for classrooms. Now, the thing we have built in is some, what we call our core space areas, like office area, lunchroom, gymnasium, music areas. We feel we've got capabilities to increase this population in this building very easily and not have to expand our core areas. That's kind of an important piece. It's easy to add a few classrooms here and there, and if you'll, you'll see the layout, we could do that very easily, and it's not a huge impact on the square footage or the budget. And we could do that now, we could do it, you know, after the referendum perhaps, you know, there's flexibility there, but that's one of the reasons you'll see our cost estimate has a range in it yet, because at this stage of the game, it's not only hard enough to come up with a building program that's going to fit you, but it's even harder to come up with a dollar amount based on a lot of the things that we don't know yet on the site, what construction industry is going to be doing in a year from now or six months from now in terms of costs, lots of impacts that come into play when we start to look at pricing. That's why at this stage, we recommend kind of a range, but at the same time, we understand you'd have to make a decision on a number. Sure. So we gotta, you know, make some good choices there on what we need to do. Okay? Any questions, more questions? We can certainly come back to this.
Matt's got one back. I have a question. The breakout space kind of serves multiple purposes, storage, but also a space where you can bring a small group of kids.
Oh, yeah.
So it can be what we want it to be.
It can be what we want it to be. And then we've got, we got that built into the program, but then we also have our 20 percent grossing factor and how we utilize that. We don't look at buildings, new buildings with, you know, court, we try to utilize every square inch we can, so the corridors of the building that we designed for you are going to be, we're going to try and utilize those spaces for some of those breakout areas or whatever the case may be.
There was an issue with the code, having kids in the hallways working, you know, in small groups that...
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Just a number of reasons.
Totally different layout would be appropriate here.
Do you need to get a question about sensory?
Yeah, I think one of the things that a number of the teachers had asked was about sensory rooms on each floor. Are they built in here somewhere?
We've got, we think we've got that programmed, and then a special education area. Maybe it didn't specifically say sensory room, per se, but, but those are definitely, you know, typically they're not used rooms, but, so we've got, we feel we're fairly comfortable there. My biggest question is, do we want to add one more classroom per every other grade level, just to get a little bit of expansion capabilities?
I think we need first this reasonable dollar figure...
Yeah.
On what this would really, would we...
That's right, make those decisions.
In your special ed line item, Brad, you got a 600 square foot and a 900 square foot. What would that size room be used for?
Both of our teachers both have classroom space right now. There are a few students who still receive pull-up services, so in a small group or individually. There are upper elementary do use like a resource kind of study hall space. Both of them are set up for like a calm-down area, so I mean, they, all of our teachers, even with being integrated into the classroom, do have their own classroom space still.
And their sixth additional rooms, is that all I'm reading, Mr. Brad? Just answer your question.
Well, I, I think like, you know, one of those would be, you know, the Mrs. Schrader room, the speech room, the OTPT have their own space right now. You know, I, I, yeah. I'm assuming like the 600, 900 would be for our actual special ed teachers, the first through third level and the fourth through five level.
Yeah. And the listing, you know, we probably are not complete with all of the listing of spaces there, like we said before, but, but there'll be some interchanging, some add additions to some, some small spaces, medium spaces, probably, but, you know, I think, again, at this level, I think we're pretty close.
Okay, I think to, just to clarify Larry's question, I guess, I think what, Larry, what you're asking is, how much additional space is this compared to what you currently have?
Well, right now, I would say they both have whatever the classroom sizes, those are 700, is that what I heard those spaces are? So they both have, you know, whatever, if one of them is on the first floor, one of them is on the second floor, and they have a classroom space, whatever size square foot those classroom spaces are, it is a regular-sized classroom.
Sure, sure. Okay. And then, like, speech and therapy, they have a classroom that is...
The two speech teachers share a classroom right, or share a space right now. It's not a whole-sized classroom, it is upstairs, yeah.
Yeah, upstairs. Okay.
And, you know, there, there would be a little bit of extra, like currently, we don't have a hearing, and a hearing aid or a hearing teacher, a vision teacher, or an interpreter at the elementary school at this time, so that could be some flexible space to move, move around and those types of things.
Can I just throw up one idea? Is if you're looking, you know, you're looking at class and keeping the class tab, which I understand, that that breakout space, if it could be expanded a little bit? I mean, if things got tight, could you use that breakout space as a fourth classroom?
You certainly could, yeah.
But I think it'd have to be a little bit bigger.
I would agree.
So that may be one.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how that works, but...
Yeah.
Just one idea. Each course is all this, we have students.
Oh, okay. Okay, for now, we can come back to that more. Would it be helpful if I went up there with my boards, so I don't, everybody's going to be looking at the back of the board?
You can certainly try.
Yeah, we could.
More on the side there. Here you go. One of those passing around. I'm going to try it with one easel. Okay?
I'll screen over there, because you need it.
Tim is, Tim is working on selling his house, so he had a Realtor coming over tonight, so he can opt in the house and join. Okay, keep in mind, these are very conceptual at this stage of the game, and, so, again, trying to even on my here. Again, we've tried to look at how to position the building here on your site. Of course, we're sloping down from the roadway here quite a bit, just quite a bit in here, and a little more gradual over here. We always thought that it'd be good to share some, maybe drop, car drop-off area, and maybe enhance that, certainly from what you're used to, try to maximize the space for car drop, and then also try to simplify and separate the buses from any pedestrian traffic, any vehicular traffic, as much as we possibly can. So in doing that, what we've talked about is placing the building off kind of on a slope, almost right at the grass level where you stop mowing, and then, and then start to let that building drop down the hillside. This, we're thinking of a two-story building here, okay? And don't get hung up on the shapes or any of that stuff, because it's so conceptual yet. But, so if we, if we came in here with our car drop-off and just said, okay, we're going to move the buses from here, we're not going to have the buses there anymore, we think that's going to benefit not only this building, the new building, but certainly can benefit the middle school, high school. And we thought about, well, what would happen if we brought the buses in around here, around the back of the school? Snuck them in there, it's every, you know, twice a day they come. Maybe there's some buses that come, small buses maybe, intermediately, I don't know that, but during the middle of the day, but, and with kindergarten, you probably do have that. So we said, let's separate the buses, put the buses back here, and then they can drop everybody off, high school kids, middle school kids, elementary kids, from one location, pick up from one location. Seemed to be a positive thing for us. Bring in our cars for our car drop-off here with some additional parking, kind of on the south side of the middle school, high school, on the north side of the new building. And then just let the building be a two-story building, we'd be coming in the building on the main level at the top level. So creating a nice little plaza area between the two buildings, a safe area for, for kids to, who are walking or getting dropped off or getting brought, dropped off with the buses. Creating an outdoor area here for play, and then an outdoor area here for play as well. Maybe this is little kids, this is big kids, I don't know that yet. So again, trying to use with what we have and make it the best and most efficient and effective in the simplest way possible started to make some sense to us. Okay? Any reaction there on the site? Now, again, this is a very preliminary plan, but in a lot of times, this is kind of dangerous, because when we start to show plans and shapes and things like that, some people react positively, some people react maybe negatively. Point being is, we're just giving ideas, suggesting ideas. So here's how the building, you'd enter the building here into a lobby space, you'd enter, be able to enter the office space first and foremost, with the second set of doors locked, so that would be total secure, security. We've got a lobby cafeteria commons area, kind of in the middle here. Our kitchen and some of the back-house stuff would be located here, receiving HVAC, some of the back-house. We've got a gymnasium here, and we've debated on the gymnasium, whether we want to put that on the lower level or put it on the upper level. I think it would work very nicely either, in either case, either situation. But in this case, we would come in and we would look down onto the gymnasium from the lobby. Again, that could be different. This light blue area is, is, like I said, cafeteria commons and some of the collaboration areas that we talked about. We've, we've got lined all the classrooms up in one linear length, taking advantage of our nice sight as it steps down the hill, and being very efficient with that. You know, boom, 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 it's pretty easy to build that stuff. We know that the classrooms on the upper level would be the lower elementary kids, so they don't have to minimize the number of steps they have to go in and go up and down, and we'll get into that discussion, I'm sure, more. And then trying to create some visual connections to the lower level with, this might be the upper, upper library, where you look down onto the library, very sparse area. Maybe use our tiered air, tiered risers, if you will. That could be kind of one of those multi-purpose functional spaces that could be a small group or large group gathering space for the kids. Set of steps going down. More openings to below, trying to get some of that natural daylight to penetrate into that building down below. And then our stairs, right now, we chose to put music and art upstairs, got special ed here, and then our, our classrooms. Very, very preliminary. Thus, the lower level, again, looks very similar. All this would be unexcavated, and keep in mind, if we chose to put these two on the upper level, this would be unexcavated as well. But we're, again, very simple, very, very straightforward and quite functional, honestly, I think, where we've got our collaboration locker areas, our special ed, classrooms, science fab lab. You know, again, I don't have all of the pieces in here yet, but the main ingredients are here. I haven't laid out the administration area, for instance, so, you know, again, just a conceptual idea. The bottom line here is, we think very highly of the site. We think it's, it's a tremendous opportunity for a school building on that site, and the sharing potential between the schools, for staff, students even, high school kids coming over to help the elementary kids, you know, it's all easy to do. And parents dropping off kids, hey, we're kind of a one-stop shop here. So it's, gets to be somewhat very efficient that way. Any questions, thoughts? Yes?
When you met with the staff, and I appreciate you putting something like this together right away, I know it sets yourself up for, I want it this way, you know, I get it. One thing that came up, and I think I brought it up, was just, schools and just bigger buildings tend to have hard services, hard corners, and that's one thing we stressed, was having a welcoming environment. I've seen schools like the New Sandy Hook School, where it's literally a wave.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, I understand it can be more expensive, but what are your, what are your thoughts on just, like, giving it some aesthetics and just make it as welcoming as possible?
Well, that's a goal that we have. Obviously, we feel this would be very welcoming here, because, you know, tremendous amounts of glass along here, tremendous amounts of glass here. We even thought about putting glass on the gymnasium up on the upper part. We see this as just opening right up onto the site here, so we got tremendous opportunities for natural light, outdoor classroom space. Every classroom has a window and a potentially even really nice view. We talked about maybe putting decks even on some of the upper classrooms. That's kind of maybe what we're showing here, is the opportunity to expand that space outward. So, so again, whether it's a curve or a, we, sky's the limit there. And we're very early for that stuff.
Okay, I'm just curious.
And, you know, I will say though, in our budgeting, it's important to, not that that stuff has to cost a lot of money, but it's important for us to leave a little elbow room in our budgeting to be able to do some of those things. And when, when you guys set a referendum number, doesn't mean we have to spend all of that money, okay? That's really important. But it does mean that you're allowing the potential for either a little bit of flexibility in that pricing to be able to do some of those kinds of things, or if it's, if we end up on a lower end, it maybe limits that potential. Okay? Make sense?
And I'm sure I'll bring it up to Kennedy, and I just totally appreciate it.
And I remember your comment before too. Our main focus here is to make this building functional and very welcoming, okay? We like to use some glass and some shapes that welcome people into the space and make kids want to be here. We want to create a space that's exciting for them to be in, they look forward to going to, not a lot of natural daylight, and all those things, but more importantly, function.
And have you seen, I was just online, just looking at one site, but it talked about how some of those things that create that welcoming environment increase the safety of the school.
Yes.
And there's actual data behind it. There is an investment piece to that too, I don't know as much as you do.
No, you do, and I agree a hundred percent. I mean, that's why we like glass in buildings. Because we think, and we, with the studies that have been showing, is it can make a building safer when you have the ability to see in the building and see out of the building, see what's going on. We don't want it to be a, kind of a box that's, doesn't make you feel like you want to go in, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, good points though. Okay, any more there?
Just a couple of comments, Brad.
Sure.
What's intriguing to me is the amount of sunshine you will get on that south exposed.
Tremendous.
Every classroom will be, have a southern exposure window.
Southern exposure and a lot of glass. We'll probably have to control the sun there so it doesn't get too warm or too sunny in those rooms.
But that's a good problem to have.
That's a good problem to have.
Exactly right. The main entrance is close, next to the gym.
Correct.
Keep traffic out of the classroom areas, of course.
Yep, yep, and we can shut the school building off somehow, some way to, so that...
I like the distance between the main entrance and the classrooms.
Yeah. It feels right on the site to us. And at this stage, doing a conceptual diagram, we were just looking at what feels right here, what feels right. What feels right with the contours, with the ability to be able to get to the front door, the relationship of this building to this building. All those things start to come into play. And I'm sure we'll tweak it. I'd be very, very surprised if it ended up like this, if it passes, but I think we're on the right trail here, let me say that.
What's the disadvantages of having that gym on the lower level and the entrance on the upper level?
Yeah. That's a good question. We can scratch off, touch on that a little bit ourselves. If it's on the lower level, which this shows, it's more, there's probably more kids down here, okay? So it's probably more connected where more of the kids are. A disadvantage would be, little kids would have to go down to it. But they're gonna have to go down to some. The kids are gonna have to move up and down to a certain level, degree. We want to make it wise. The nice thing about having these little kids on the upper level is they don't have to go down just to get to their classroom. And literally, they could come out here to a play area right off this main grade. We actually thought about, should we show, should we show an entrance down here? That's still something we could talk about. But typically, you like all the kids to come in the front door normally, so that's why we didn't show that, but something that could be discussed more. I don't know, there's, there are gonna be more pros and cons to having these two spaces on the lower level versus the upper level?
I like the open to below.
These little guys?
Yeah. Do we still have them?
We will definitely have them.
Regardless?
Regardless.
Okay. But the library?
The library would, again...
That's on the lower level too.
It's on the lower level, and what this allows us to do is have a taller volume. So people, kids up here can look down onto the library space. We're looking down onto the gym. Now imagine if these two spaces are upstairs, up on the upper level. What's gonna happen is, this lower level plan really simplifies itself. All this is unexcavated. So this is the lower level plan with connections, visual connections here and here on the stairwells. The nice, it makes these kids a little more, a little less connected to the school, I would say. Whereas if this library resource center is down, then they're more connected. And the kids upstairs are gonna be connected anyway because they see it. They're gonna see it, walk by it every day. So, maybe this is down and this is up. We've got, and here's another thing that might come into play. When we really start to sink our teeth into the site, if this was the chosen plan kind of direction, we'll do soil borings out here, and we'll do a ton of borings in here. We might see that there's a lot of bedrock, could be there. Maybe it might make sense for us to leave that gym up to minimize the amount of bedrock we have to disturb and move. So, there's gonna be reasons for us doing whatever we end up doing.
The science lab there certainly would benefit from an outdoor lab.
Yeah, tremendous. I mean, we've got, sky's the limit on here. And I really see some great opportunities. There'll be doors here, there'll be doors here probably going out. The classrooms could have doors, all of them, if they wanted to, just exit doors only, no arbor on the outside. We don't like a lot of doors on a school building, but at the same time, we like to have the kids have the ability to get out. And maybe we don't put doors here, but if we have doors here and here to get out, that certainly might suffice for the kids.
Little kids of inner point will be very lucky.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm telling you, in terms of a layout, I couldn't feel better about this layout at this stage of the game. It's tremendous, I think.
Could you put up the overhead layout?
Yep.
I have a couple of clarifying questions. So, the space in between the new and the old, that's just like open-air sidewalk, right?
This is open-air, yep. And maybe there's more pla, I call it a plaza sidewalk, trees.
Perfect.
Some fun, nice things there that make it a very comfortable space.
Okay. And then, was there much thought or exploration into how the buses might flow back there behind the building? And whether that's gonna be a two-way lane, or is it gonna have to be a lot of the lane?
This will be two-way.
Okay.
Buses will be, and also receiving will be coming in here.
Okay.
Okay, because our receiving area is right here.
Okay.
And that's not gonna happen all the time during the day either. That's probably morning or late afternoon or evening, late afternoon probably. So, and I talked to Mitch a little bit about the buses, and it's something you're not used to, there's no doubt about that. But we think it could really help not having buses, traffic up here. It could be a good thing. So it's gonna take a little shift of gears for us mentally to think about that potential.
Angie told me to keep my mouth shut because she said you're probably not gonna be there anyway. But the bus drop-off, I'm a little concerned where that's going to bring our middle school and high school students in, in that one wing. Too congested, not a lot of room down there.
Okay.
I don't know if you've ever been?
Oh yeah, I've been down there.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I'd kind of like to have a conversation.
Oh, I agree.
Okay.
This is all up for discussion, trust me. But we felt that it was, it made enough sense, at least schematically, to put it on paper and have those discussions. Because we were looking at all kinds of different scenarios up here. Buses here, cars here. Nothing was really feeling comfortable until we said, "Well, what happens if we bring all the buses back here? There's nine of them, six, seven of them, eight of them, something like that."
Yeah.
And make this comfortable for the buses to turn, park, pick up, unload. When you're unloading, it's one or two at a time, so. But when you're picking out, they'll all be there at the same time. So that's what we'd have to design it for. And again, keeping those buses away from everything else. And then theoretically, I was imagining they could just go up here, but I'd like to see that because I, for them to have to turn here and do that, I... Something to...
To talk about. Right now, some buses come in the north entrance, and some buses will come in off of Ross Street and actually go through the large parking lot by the football stadium to turn around to come back. So that the doors, their pickup doors are on the correct side.
The right side.
And so, I mean, they get in there to get that turn back in. So there are, I know it's hard to believe, students running out to their cars to get out of here at 3:25 when buses might be rolling in.
Yeah.
But if there's a way to try to separate some more of that traffic, it would be ideal.
Right. Well, the bus guys told us that it's more unsafe up here at the high school than it is at the elementary present.
I believe it.
And that it looks like a pretty good solution to break the buses.
Plus, there's parents and grandparents picking up kids, which also adds to the congestion.
Right.
The other nice benefit of something like this is it can double during the normal day for a hard surface play area. We normally would put a gate here, put a gate here that's controlled by the office with a push of a button. And you can control traffic not being able to get in here. That would be ideal because then you can use this, all this hard surface play, all this hard surface for hard surface play area, which we need anyway for those little guys, little kids. Okay?
I'm sure somebody has told you we have access to Fountain Street down on the west side of the property.
Oh, here?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we have, there's a... Okay.
The legal entrance.
Yeah.
It was, it was always thought that we would get our interchanges off of that right here, just right here.
Right. So, that's another potential.
Which I, which I would like to see give us another access if we're adding 350 more bodies to the site.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a, I would agree with you. Could solve a lot of issues and concerns too. But the point being here is that I think we're showing a solution that is very, very doable, very, very comfortable, functionally, aesthetically. And we've got a lot of elbow room for things like additional access points or moving the building, you know. Lot of opportunities here, I think. And for us to get hung up, I mean, the time is short here. For us to get hung up on, you guys need to make a decision in a week or so. So, we won't get into those details, but during, if you proceed with a referendum, all those things are good information for us to chew on and talk about and think about potential solutions. Knowing that even after the referendum, there's more, a lot of more time that's gotta go into fine-tuning the layout and the design of this thing. But the potential is certainly there.
I think it's a very good start.
Yeah, we do too, we feel tremendous about it.
But the question will be asked, did you consider connecting the elementary to the high school?
We did, we did, we did. And the challenge we have there is where you connect it to and how it gets connected. And we felt that for all of the challenges we had in connecting it and some of the, you know, for instance, where would the entry be? Is it over on this side? And then how do the buses work? Maybe it's right here. We felt two things. One is, it seemed like we were trying to force that a little bit. And then, it seems like we're gonna make some concessions in functionality or concessions in additional costs that we might generate by trying to force a connection. We talked about just creating a covered pathway to the building, just not even in close closure, but covering that connects the building. So, still can be food for thought, no doubt, on how we connect it. Connecting to classroom wings is tough. A whole new school connecting to one of these wings or the middle air could be dumb, and I'm not throwing it out yet.
From a, from a maintenance standpoint, in operation and construction, is there a big savings? Would there, could there be a savings in a connected?
Only if we can use things like the existing cafeteria, bring the little kids over here to eat, use the kitchen.
The mechanical components?
The mechanicals really don't, no. Because we have to build X amount of capacity in our mechanical system. So we'd have to increase the capacity of the existing mechanical system. So, here and there, which, whatever. Probably be cheaper to do this. And trying to find a way, like I said, the biggest thing is trying to find a way to get the building fit up in here so it's close enough where it makes sense to, "Oh yeah, we can use the music room, so we can use lunchroom for the little kids." Then the logistics of all that become very challenging in that of having kindergartners go to eat, maybe they have to go through the middle school hallway to get there, or, you know, little things like that. And I'm saying, I'm not gonna say it can't be done. I'm gonna say it might be able to be done, but that's something we're not gonna solve in a week.
Right, right. From the safety aspect of schools, can you build this to be as safe as?
Exactly, yeah, as safe, more safe, yeah. More, we can build this as safe as we want it to be. The plan really lends itself nicely for that.
There has been chatter about fencing in school properties and having single-point access during school hours.
Okay, fencing the property?
A gated, a gated school.
Okay.
In this situation, you could, you could secure this relatively easy.
I feel very comfortable doing that. Yeah, and whether it's fencing or landscaping, or, you know, all kinds of... There's all kinds of different levels of fencing. And I will point out though, that security starts at the perimeter. If you really want to secure, it's perimeter first, building, and then internal. So...
Well, I was referring to perimeter.
Yeah. Now, in my budgeting, I haven't budgeted a perimeter fence yet.
Nor would I want to.
Okay. You wanna talk about budget a little bit?
Yep.
Okay. Again, as you can imagine, at this stage, like I said, it's hard to, very, very broad, broad share, okay? We know that we're, we, some of the unknowns, the biggest unknowns are site development, okay? That's why you see a low range and a high range, okay? We feel very, very comfortable with the high range and reasonably comfortable with the low range, okay? The elementary building itself, 72,000 square feet, we priced that at $200 a square foot for both scenarios, for both the high and the low. Because we think that's a very reasonable number to use at this stage. And something that shouldn't change a lot. The only, the only way it's gonna change is if we move the building to a different location, to maybe slide it over and you have more sidewalks to build, or more carved, ground-up paving to build. That's why we've incorporated those numbers up here, the variables. The cost of building should stay the same. We've got allowances in here for technology infrastructure, all this, the infrastructure of the building, security cameras, access controls, smart boards, projectors, all of those kinds of pieces of equipment. We've got a line item in here of $350,000 for furniture and fixtures and equipment. We've got a kitchen line item in here of $200,000, okay? And again, the potential maybe of reusing some equipment that you're existing, I don't know that. We've got a line item in here of $125,000 for playground equipment. And again, maybe there's some reuse there potentially. We've got a line item in here for geotechnical work, the soil borings we talked about, and survey work to get the information we need to design it. We've got a contingency built in of $900,000, that's a chunk. And again, it's for things that are unforeseen yet. Maybe we want to add to the program, maybe we want a few more classes. Maybe we want, some of that might come in during construction when we hit triple amount of bedrock we think we might have. You know, those kinds of things come into play. And that's why we have a pretty hefty number there. We put an estimate in here for architectural engineering, and I mentioned that, I think I told you Mitch, that we were gonna shoot for 6.7% fee for the 12, $11.9 million project. Okay, we kind of combined that into one. But for this, knew that this was a new building, we would be at 5.3% of construction cost. So, the addition remodeling is more complicated, so our fee typically is a little higher. And you remember, when we interviewed, we were at like six and a half and five and a half. We said, "Well, let's simplify it, combine it into one, and go 6.7 for all of that." And then, and then the fee for the new construction, we could be more aggressive with. At five point three. So, we're coming up with a total construction cost of about, on the low end, eighteen point seven to nineteen point five on the high end. And some of the things that estimates are based on preliminary master planning, you know, of course, very preliminary. Based on historical data that we've got. And we're trying to project what we think, for instance, steel might be costing us in six months, all those kinds of things start to come into play.
Would this be, would this be, I don't know if we can answer this now, would this be a steel or would it be a concrete block?
I don't know that answer. Again, that would be a function of what the soil conditions will allow the best, what the functionality would require the most to give us more, most flexibility possible. And maybe when we're gonna build it might come into play. If we're building in the winter, steel usually is a better option because we don't have to heat all those masonry constructed areas. Steel sometimes is quicker to build, so lots of talk and discussion about those kinds of decisions, yeah. Good question though, yeah. And then, we're assuming that this would be a bid out project. We would design it, draw it with you guys real closely and then bid it out to competitively general contractors that wanna bid it. And you'll have lunch. And, and then we haven't, we haven't put in any numbers in here for recommissioning your existing elementary school. Okay? What we can do with that, I'm not sure yet. And speaking of that, let me talk a little bit about what we found. Our structural engineer joined us over here, walked this building. And at the elementary school, the current elementary school, trying to figure out what's going on with those floors, okay? And it's kind of interesting, you know, some of the engineering components behind the thinking of our structural engineer. What, 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 what happened there is, what's going on, we feel, is the, the older part of the building is put on basically piers, okay? Where the new part of the building is put on a big foundation wall that's solid. Okay? And, and you'll notice that the new part of the building's up a few, like a few inches. There's that little ramp in there. And all that water, we think, is coming down the hillside and coming up against the building. And because that one part of the building's a little higher, we got a little pondding going on on the upper, on the inside of that.
North.
North side. And what we think is going on is that water is penetrating underneath the building and finding little ways, pathways, under the building to get out of there, okay? And that's why we think we're seeing, the building moves a little bit still, I think. And it's not gonna fall down or anything, but it's, it's kinda like a glacier. It's slowly moving down the hill to a certain degree, okay? I mean, very slowly, we'll never see it happen. Okay? But, but, but we think that that water's going underneath there and affecting some of the subgrade underneath that building where it's like little channels of water going under there. And that's why we think that the building is doing some kind of crazy things. And the new part of the building isn't doing that, we don't feel. We talked with Roger there. And that's, that's one assumption that our engineers, engineers are moving on now. And we think to, to, the, the solution isn't just level the slabs, that's not the solution. Because that'd be very expensive and it's gonna still do some of that. So, that would be useless, basically, money not well spent. So, we're kinda scratching our heads trying to figure out if there is a good solution and if it is, what it is. And whether, whether we would recommend you implementing that in that building because, because it's already started, that water kinda, it may not stop and might keep doing that. One of the things that we could look at trying to do is solve the water problem on the outside, obviously. We should do that no matter what perhaps, but that may still not solve the problem because there's already some of those channels that have developed. It's like an erosion area, that's, when you have an erosion field, if you don't do some drastic things, it's gonna keep finding its way.
Would it be fair to say, Brad, that the, the condition is causing?
Well, it, the addition, for some reason, got put up a little higher than everything else. And it's creating a lot of water to go into that little area next to the older part of the building. And that's where the water is, we think, is sneaking out of the building.
So, even if you put new slabs in, that water could still go.
Oh yeah, it will probably unless we do something outside, which.
You know, why do you have a cost to fix?
We, we haven't sunk our teeth into that one yet. No, with that referendum that you've already passed, you've got a budget set already. And so, that's what you can spend on fixing that challenging problem there. Now, another thing we did think of is that if that project is pursued, remember how that building addition was added to kinda on the outside there, that kinda went in an angle? We were thinking, would it make more sense, not only from a functional perspective, but also helping solve this water problem perhaps? Build it right along the north wall of that building. So, we don't have that little ponding area anymore. We can collect the water, get the water away from coming down into the building with our new addition somehow. We would highly, highly suggest we look at that closely. If this referendum, if you, if you pursue this referendum, obviously, it's passive, we, we pursue this, so we would have to think about that. But if the other one, we, we wanna look at that.
Before, before we go to referendum, is there some way that we can get a cost on whatever it would be to fix that problem down there?
We can take a crack at it.
I mean, if we don't, so we can let people know that, okay, this is gonna cost
Yeah.
Three million to fix, you know?
Yeah.
So, we gotta add three million onto the twelve point, your eleven point nine that we have because that did go.
Well, you can't do that.
But we can. Yeah, we'd have to have a referendum again to get that.
Or to take it out of the twelve, eleven point nine.
Yeah, and I don't have to settle for less for the building. But do you think it?
We can take a crack at it.
Would it be cop, is it, you think it'd be costly?
Well, I don't know if it's gonna be costly to think about moving the addition over to the north side of the building. We are gonna lose some windows into classrooms, that's a concern that we have.
Yeah.
But we think we can solve that problem with natural light coming in from above somehow and creating a common area between the two buildings that would be sharing some, some of those collaboration spaces perhaps. It's not an easy one, but I'm sure there's always a solution, a reasonably good solution, some are better than others, of course, to solve a problem like that.
Right, it's an assumption. We don't, I don't think we own all that land on that side.
We own up to.
Yeah, we saw that survey.
We've already crossed that though.
Yeah.
So, we, we would.
Right.
So. Anything else on the current elementary site, Brad? Inside the, the old building, mechanicals?
Well, again, I think the plan was to redo most of the mechanical, electrical plumbing in the building as part of that eleven point nine million. The, you know, it's, it's a two-story building, again, I was never enthralled with the way the addition was laid in there. I think there's a better solution, is my point there. And I, you know, if the time comes and we need to do that, we'll look at those better options perhaps. And maybe we'll, maybe we'll all determine that, hey, there's no better option after we've looked at three or four of them. Let's go back to what the original referendum point was.
Going back to the, the site, in, in them projections, air conditioning?
Oh yeah.
You, you don't put a school up anymore with air conditioning?
No, it's all air conditioned. It would be air conditioned, a very, very efficient, effective heating source. I'm not sure what that is yet, because a lot of times it's a VAV system and where you get a lot of flexibility within the spaces. Here, we're gonna lob special consideration on the south side of the building for not only air conditioning, but ventilation and sun shading. And that certainly can help us in many ways and help heating and passive solar and all those kinds of things, taking advantage of that as much as we possibly can. But, yeah, no cutting corners there on the mechanics of the building.
On the outdoor play areas, on that slope, that would be a tiered?
Probably tiered, yeah, we'd probably have to do some tiering and could be very much, you know, playful, you know? I think it could be very, very interesting, taking advantage of the, the topography that we have on the site.
Yeah, at the current site, we have outdoor, outdoor gardens. I mean, a southern exposed load.
Oh yeah. Yeah, really made a potential here for all that.
Yeah, instead of, first of all, that space up there, is it geothermal, a big consideration?
Well, geothermal in bedrock is tough, okay? We could do ponds, perhaps, might, might fit well here in this site too. But the geothermal piece, the, the, whatever we do for geo, and here's an example. We've done a few school buildings where the geothermal part of it, the well part of it, or the pond part of it is kind of an expensive part of it. It's like, could be up to a million dollars here or more. So, but we, what we have done is set up a few buildings where the mechanical system is designed with a series of units that would be capable of basically plugging into a geothermal system if the wells were ever put in. Okay? So, that's something to consider when we design it. If we can't afford a geothermal system, which we really have a budget in now. We haven't budgeted the wells or the pond. But certainly consideration can be made when we design the building for those considerations in the future.
What about solar?
Easy to do that, you know, solar capabilities, you know, photovoltaic or certainly passive solar is, is, is a, is a given here with this site. We'll be doing that.
And certainly there's many dollars available.
Granted, yeah.
And do you do that kind of work, Brad?
We do.
Do you work with, focus on energy?
Yeah, all the time. We'll probably get those guys involved, those folks involved real quickly after, if this referendum passes or fails, if you have one. Whatever project we end up doing, we'll get those folks available, involved right away.
What kind of roof line do you envision on a project like this? Flat roof, sloped roof?
Well.
Combination?
You know, sometimes it's a combination. The, the thing about sloped roofs that I do know is when they're sloped, they're gonna create water. And if it's cold enough, it's gonna be ice coming off the roof, so we have to think about that. Whereas if it's a sloped roof internally drained, it's, it's not flat, it's sloped internally. Then we can control that water and get it out of the way so we don't create ice situations or ice problems in any location of the building. Especially around an elementary building. It's really important for those little guys.
Now, the current elementary, that's a flat, that's a flip, right?
Yeah.
Have we ever had any problems with the elementary with that roof?
It's been replaced.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty years, so.
What happened here?
I've been here, this is my eighth year here, so I think it was completely finished maybe six years ago. And they were doing it in stages.
That was like forty, so it'll be like forty-four years that roof stayed there, basically.
And they, they redid the drainage too. Side of the building.
But I, yeah, I did, I did read something where the, the new technology with the floor is so much better than the tin, what we have here.
So, plus the fact that as soon as you build a building like this, you have to build all this extra space, whether it's open, to, open inside or, or not. It's cost dollars, you know, it costs money to do that. That's why you see more lock sorts like this or like this, you know, because it's cheaper to do it that way. And it's usually more economical and efficient for them to do it that way. But we'll study all those options.
I know we got more on our agenda, I could talk to you all night about this stuff. Couple, a couple more questions, ceiling height in a new, new building, maybe nine, ten feet?
Yeah, again, for little kids, depends on the space, number one. What spaces are we talking about? Obviously, gymnasium's gonna be twenty-eight feet tall. The, the library, we imagine, it's a function of how big the space is as to how, how much volume you have in there. The, the library, we'd like to see, you know, eighteen to twenty, but at the same time, you don't wanna get the building so big that little kids can't relate to it. So, we feel a lot of times combination of lower spaces, you know, eight, nine, ten feet versus some larger volumes, maybe twelve, fifteen, even up to eighteen feet, are appropriate depending on where you are in the building.
You had an eight thousand square foot gym?
Eighty.
Eighty-five hundred maybe, eighty-six, eighty-six hundred?
Eighty-five hundred square feet.
Is that a single basketball court?
Well, it would be, this is definitely big enough to have one main court, regulation size, and two side courts. Probably regulation size, okay? Depending on how many were seating and all those things, but probably can do that in that space.
And then cafeteria would be outside of the gym?
Yes, outside the gym.
Up on the main floor.
On the main floor. So, we'd be looking down onto the gym, and we'd probably have the ability to walk down the bleachers here or something like that, you know? Top load gym, we call it. Where people come in here and the gym drops down.
And the gym would have some bleacher system in it?
Oh yeah, of course, yeah.
With the air wells nowadays?
Yeah, whatever, you know, whatever we need to do for cool.
That's a joke, is it? Our, our bleachers in our twenty-year-old school does not have air wells.
Oh, don't have air wells, okay. Well, yeah, again, depending on how many we wanna seat in here, you know, that might be a question.
Or do we have steps?
Oh yeah, okay, so it's just the bleachers?
Just use the bleachers for the steps.
You've got rails on the outside.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you talk to the eighty, eighty, the eighty-five-year-old person.
Oh yeah, it's hard, it's hard getting in and out.
That's tough.
Yeah. Of course, I wanted wooden bleachers, but hey, nobody listened to me.
Nobody listened to you? Wooden bleachers are nice, there's no doubt about that.
Forced, forced air system for heating and ventilation?
Well, probably, yeah, probably an air system for not only the heating, but also the cooling.
All right. A building that size would be like a single boiler type source?
We probably have multiple boilers where we can, they're mod, they'd be modular boilers, considered modular. They're really small, you know, they're like this big. And we might have three, four of them, so it's the most efficient way to do it, so, you know, probably eighty percent of the time, you only need one boiler blow. And then maybe eighty-five, you might kick on another one. And maybe five percent of the time, maybe all three or four of them are going. But, but you alternate them too, so that this one might start first this year, and then next year, this one starts first. So, it gives you good long-term operational value there.
On the lower level, window sizes in height off of the, off the floor for safety purposes, what, what's common nowadays?
Well, for me, for me, this is me, not everybody agrees with me. I like, for elementary kids, I like windows low, fairly standing to the floor. But at the same time, I like in-floor heat. That might be something to be considering here, in-floor heat, especially on the upper level, these little kids. Kindergarteners, preschoolers are on the floor a lot. So, we like to see in-floor heat there, and I like to see the windows closed to the floor so those little kids can relate to what the heck's going on outside. They can see better. It's not just a little hole in the wall for them, it's a hole, it's a, it's an event for them to look out the window. That's just me. People can disagree with me on that, I'm sure, all day long.
Lockers, uh, on walls?
Well, a lot of times lately, we're putting lockers in bays. I don't know if you've been to Dodgeville?
I have.
We've got those locker bays as you come in the door there. It helps for supervision to a certain degree, but it also helps keeping some clutter away from the whole hallway. But, but in this instance, you know, we might have a few here, we might have some here, we might have some down there. Or we could put them along the wall too. There's all kinds of options there. We've made those decisions too.
One last question for me. When, when, would we get a conceptual? When would we get a conceptual side drawing?
Image?
Image of elevation.
We can do something as soon as we want to do it, if we want to have something for the pre-referendum piece to help the public, we can do that. Now, keep in mind, people aren't going to always agree with what we, our first images might look like, so there's some risk there. But I was saying, it's just, you know, we can change that, it's just a drawing.
Forgive me if I missed this while I was out, but I think the main thing before we decide on the language is, would anything specific that's decided later affect the cost in such a significant way that we probably need to mention it in the resolution? I don't know what that is, whether it be...
I don't think, I don't think...
Various parking, or whether it's detached, you said detached, you know, being attached might be hard to do and might add more cost, so I mean, is that important to specify, whether it's attached or not attached?
I don't think it is important at this stage of the game.
Okay.
I mean, your board council will help more with that, but I think it's best to be somewhat general in terms of a resolution language, to give you flexibility in doing some things like that or exploring some things like that. I don't think you want to lock yourself into saying that it's going to be a detached building, or it's going to be connected, you know. I don't know if there's a need to do that, but they might have some...
I'm just saying, if either option is a difference of a million dollars, two million dollars, three million dollars, right, then it probably would be helpful to specify that. I just wanted to get your thoughts on, as you're laying out different, you're weighing different schematic options here, is one arrangement or one schematic option significantly less costly or more costly than the others?
We feel that this is probably as cost-effective as any, this layout, okay? Because if we start looking at connecting it, I mean, there's going to be not only cost challenges perhaps, but more functional challenges, more so than cost challenges, cost issues.
So from hearing you write, what you're proposing is, in terms of schematic, is probably the least expensive option?
I feel, I feel that.
Okay, so if, for whatever reason, either there's community input, or there's problems with this option with excavating or whatever, and we have to go to some other option, then, you know, how much do we risk there? Is it included in this site development window, you know, of the plus eight-hundred-thousand?
I think on...
That would make sense to me, but if...
Being on the high end of that would give us...
Plus, maybe for schematic options.
Yeah, I think that's in a nutshell, yeah. So that just becomes, what's the tolerance, you know?
Right.
What's the tolerance on the folks? We feel the nineteen and a half is very, very doable and comfortable for creative flexibility and giving yourselves a little bit of elbow room, and the community elbow room, to come up with solutions that are appropriate. And if we went on the lower end of it, it would be harder to solve some of those challenges. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's the thing.
Thanks, Brad.
Yep.
So what's in your packet is basically a language that we were using from the first referendum for the building. In that referendum, it spelled out specifically that the ADA, the bus loop, all those things that were, projects that were looped into the scope. And on just advice of Corals and Brady, you could get away with, for the purposes of building a brand-new elementary school, I can certainly run this by them, you know, to get their wording specifically, I don't know that will change much on these things, but what I would need from you as a board is to say, what is that dollar amount that you wish to move forward with, so that I can get the resolution language from them for next Monday?
Well, I think with the nineteen point five not to exceed nineteen point five, I think, personally, I think that's reasonable, because even if, even if we have, like he has a contingency in there, I mean, if we don't use that, we don't need to use it.
Right.
But I don't want to be sitting here with a pass and saying, okay, we're going to take that out, we're going to take that out, we got to take that out, because we don't have enough money. And that's something that happened when this was built, there was things that were taken out because there wasn't enough money in there to do it. I don't think we'll do that very well, I'm interested, that's my opinion.
If I'm hearing you right, are you saying that according to the attorney's recommendation, when you say a new school, it assumes all of, a lot of the things that we kind of had to lay out in terms of a remodel plan as far as classrooms, cafeteria, parking, hustling?
They would probably roll in, you know, equipping, you know, furnishing.
Right.
And then they would probably throw those, that verbiage in, but it would be...
Oh, okay.
All, you know, include all of that for the school.
The wording in the resolution.
The wording in the resolution, you know?
Yes.
Does the word "new elementary school building" imply certain things inherently?
I think when you write resolutions, you know, the districts that have new buildings, it's not just like, for a new high school, you know, twenty-point-five million.
Right.
That's all, they don't have to add on, because you're not remodeling them, you're remodeling, what are you remodeling?
Right.
You can't just say we're remodeling the elementary.
Right, so it might be for the building and furnishing of a new elementary school.
I understand the concern, Tony, I wouldn't want to shortchange it. What assurances do we have Mitch, that if we're going to spend nineteen million, that we're not getting eighteen million dollars worth of goods and services, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that question.
What assurances? Will, can you guarantee the board that if we go with a nineteen million dollar referendum, again, and it is successful, that you give us, if it takes eighteen million, we're only going to pay eighteen million?
Yeah, I mean, again, because it's going to be bid out, we'll know what those numbers are once we get a design and bid. Now, during the design development and construction documents, we got to really do our due diligence in estimating very closely. So we're very positive that we're within that ballpark of nineteen million or whatever that number is. And if it comes in under budget, that's what the number is. Now, keep in mind, there'll still be a contingency for things that come out during construction. That's what that contingency's for too, is things that come up as, things that need to be added or changed, for whatever reason during construction, so you need some change orders of things. But, yeah, we can pretty much guarantee that that's, that comes back to you, you're not going to spend nineteen million when the bids come in at eighteen.
If we, other than the general contractor, you are the voice of the board to the contractor?
We're your representative, we are your advocate.
And if you see something that doesn't look, if it looks like it's overpriced?
Oh, yeah.
You go to that for the midpoint, school district?
Exactly right.
No questions asked?
No doubt about it, yeah. And we'll study those bids very closely. And even when it comes to change orders, once the construction starts, if there's a change order, we'll study that thoroughly and make sure the pricing is correct and right and appropriate. If it's not, we send it back to the contractor, say, hey, this is right, you're not accurate, you're not, okay?
I think the other piece of this that will help ensure that it's the money spent correctly, if you remember Lisa talking about, in essence, borrowing two different amounts of money, you know, to make it, you know, if it's ten million or less, then local banks have the opportunity to bid. So if you start with that, and then, you know, you have that second issue of debt that kind of finalizes the project, so then, if you break it up, it's ten million, and then nine-point-five million would be the second borrow, if you don't need the nine-point-five on the second borrow, you only need eight-point-five, that's what you borrow, and you've saved taxpayers money, does, instead of borrowing all of the money right away, and then, and now what do we do with it? You know, then you have a tendency to spend it all, if you've borrowed it all, where I think if you use it in two phases, you tend to be a lot more budget conscious and taxpayer concerned about what happens there too.
Lisa will ask us for a payout schedule. What that involves is us putting together a construction schedule, and then from that construction schedule, we'll make our best determination on how you're going to have to pay that money to get to your nineteen or eighteen million, whatever it is. And what the two loan amounts makes good sense, because then she's got the flexibility to do a lesser amount at the end loan, at the last loan, plus the fact that she's going to probably do some investing of your money, if you take that first loan out, she's going to, because you're not going to use most of it until you're half-done with the project, so she'll then be investing that for you, and there'll be some interest accruing that you can apply to the project as well, which might in turn minimize the second loan amount that you have to make. She's good at that.
So Tony has no problem with nineteen-five, what does everybody else think?
I'd like to make a comment on that. I believe in Christmas, but I also believe in reality. I think that's excessive. I think I'd split the difference. I would probably go for sixteen, because I would see the cost in my mind as not that much greater between twelve and sixteen to have a new school. It would also implore us to really be careful about what we're getting for our money. I just feel asking for nineteen-five is too much. That's the reason originally I changed from the idea of a new school to a remodel, because I thought that was too much. That's my comment. I would certainly love to have everything and everything perfect, but I just, I think that's assin, pretty much.
I don't want to be sitting here three years from now, saying, oh, we should have put this classroom in, we should have done this nicer roof, we should have, you know, done these things, because once they move in, or, you know, now we need more storage space, or whatever, simply because we cut corners and, you know, with all due respect, I mean, I have no expertise to say this is going to, for me to look at one drawing and say this is going to cost sixteen-nine, I have no expertise to say that. So we hired an expert to give us a reasonable cost estimate based on, what did you say in the asterisk there, Brad? Historical data, current projects, and project complexity. So I think really the debate is whether to do eighteen-seven or nineteen-five.
I'd like to talk to that issue we just brought up.
Yeah.
We have, I forget how many architectural firms interviewed with us, they said that the average cost is between two-hundred and two-hundred-and-fifty, the high end, if you take that times a seventy thousand, that puts you between fourteen and fifteen million. I...
Right, it's at fourteen-four?
Yes, I got that.
Okay.
That's the reason I built in a little extra when I said sixteen. And if we've got four architectural firms saying they can build a new school for fourteen-four on the low end, why do we want to go to nineteen-five? I know, I know you want to anticipate everything, but that'll be for future boards and future population changes, future public input.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to believe the point that you see, so that's exactly what the construction cost is.
Right.
Then you add all the excavation, site preparation, storm management estimated here, then you've got, then this doesn't even include equipment and fixtures and furniture and kitchen playground, and then it doesn't even include the fees of anybody doing the job.
Some of that will probably come from the old school, won't we be using, utilizing any of that old material?
I think that's a fair question.
I wonder, why not? I mean, you mentioned we could utilize playground equipment perhaps?
You know, so I mean, we're looking at saving, what, maybe fifty percent on a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, or maybe fifty percent on two-hundred-thousand, I mean, that's not a difference of three million dollars, that's a difference of maybe a couple hundred thousand, you know, plus a contingency, you know, which I think you have to have for a project, but...
I see your point.
I'll give the floor to Brad on, you can focus on sixteen million for total cost of project if you want to.
I will say, I, it's too bad architects sometimes exist, okay? Because, because they'll, when they say you can build a building for two-hundred dollars a square foot, yeah, you can, but what doesn't that include? And those are some of the things that, I wanted to make sure it's all comprehensive and inclusive, that you get a building that you're going to expect that you don't have to, oh, when we're done with this building, we don't have chopboards, or we don't, we want to make sure it's going to have everything you need, and that's why when they say two-hundred dollars a square foot, yeah, the building, but all the other things, site work, all those other things come into play, unfortunately.
I mean, to me, it makes total sense, I mean, what did FTH quote us? Eighteen, right?
Yes.
And this is...
But then they said at that meeting, they could build us a new school?
They're talking apples, it's apples and oranges.
Okay, I see what you're saying, because they're not, they're not talking about the extras.
That's right.
They need to be in a school.
That number was not included.
It wasn't all-inclusive.
There you go.
It's like speeds.
Now I'm following, yeah.
And it's kind of like building a house, you build a house for a hundred-and-fifty dollars per square foot.
Yeah.
It doesn't include your furniture, your knee, and all that, and your excavation. You know, you're building here, you might get rock and you got to have explosives blow up.
The kids do need to ask, I'm sure.
Okay, we need, we're going to move on, but the, I agree with the one remark that Dr. Dunn had said, and personally, I would have a hard time going over the eighteen-seven, because I think eighteen-seven is going to be a lot easier to try to spell than nineteen-five. If you really want, if you really want to give this thing a chance to pass, I think you've got to get, you've got to get it down under that nineteen-figure.
Okay.
But didn't you guys talk about that when you had the first referendum, how you didn't think that would pass, and then you had everybody come in bed and say, we want a new school?
I think, I think the quote is something like, there's no way the committee's going to vote for twelve million, I'd be, I'd be surprised if they vote for anything over seven million.
I've heard, I've heard a ton of them not voting nineteen-five.
Okay.
So that's...
Okay, we're sitting in the same position we were in six months ago.
I agree with you, so, and that's just my opinion. Is there any other opinions?
Based on what?
An eighteen-seven, nineteen-five, talking eight-hundred thousand.
Well, I think, I think we should be able to, seven, eight-hundred thousand in that nine-fifty figure for all the allowance, because I do not see why we would need to bring all new furniture into this building.
I think that stuff has to be yet decided, I think this number, Brad is covering them. He is, just like we talked about, we don't want to go back and ask for more, this covers it. Say it comes in at seventeen-five.
Right.
Outstanding, I do get where you're saying, Jeff, that's the number of people are going to see though, is this number.
And if the contingency, we might, we probably won't use it. A nine-hundred thousand on contingency.
Well, that's going to have to be part of the explanation actually, we can only handle a sold forty-dollar amount.
Okay, we're not going to do a motion, but we need, let's do a straw vote, you're okay with nineteen-five, Dr. Dunn? He's okay? The poor man's deal. Larry?
What do you think, we're not voting?
It's an actual...
It's information discovery.
Straw vote is only...
Twenty-first, Brad, the language twenty-first.
So we'll have a meeting next Monday night then?
Yes. I need to have a dollar amount to have the resolution written that will appear on the ballot, we have to have that done by the twenty-first, so that I can get it to the municipal clerks and the Iowa County Clerk on the twenty-second.
Well, I, I support what it will take up to nineteen, nineteen-five, but I...
That's all we need to know.
But we're going to vote on it.
We need a number, we need a number, Brad, to confirm on your resolution.
And then the resolution would probably say not to exceed...
The nineteen-five.
This, this, that would be it, if it went nineteen million, five-hundred thousand and one dollar, I'd have to come up with one dollar out of my pocket, because the taxpayers don't, do not pay anything above that top number.
Let me ask you this, let me ask you this, just hilarious point, let's say you draft a resolution for the twenty-first for nineteen-five, and let's say the majority of the board gets overwhelming feedback that it should be nineteen, or it should be eighteen-seven, or it should be whatever, can we amend that resolution before we vote on it at the twenty-first meeting? Can we amend that resolution before we vote on it at the twenty first meeting?
I would say yes.
Plus what it mean why, this, this straw vote is, I'm taking my vote back, say I'm not voting because.
So you wanna just amend it with nineteen five?
I understand where eighteen seven or even eighteen nine is.
He needs direction to be able to get the resolution.
You guys are gonna end up with another multi-purpose room, is what's gonna happen. You're, you're not gonna get anything better than what you have down there right now for a gym.
Right, the gym is, yeah.
You mean if we under budgeted?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear you.
And the gym was a big thing, right? You know, yeah, you're in the mouth. They wanted a gym, that was.
So we'll just move forward with nineteen five.
Okay. Fair enough. Does my mother, I mean, I'm just assuming, so this draft does not say where this is gonna be built?
On school district owned property.
Right, so that could be anywhere.
On school district owned property.
Correct. So-
Could be attached, it could be-
They could see that.
Could be on the elementary school site.
Could be on the elementary school site.
Okay, so do we want to specify?
You might want to specify on the, at the, at the high school.
Because one of FTH's, one of FTH's designs, remember, was to tear down the old building and build right on top of it.
Yeah, and they're not your architect anymore.
No.
I know, but I'm saying we could do that. If it's not specified, and hey, if the board wants that flexibility-
You can't, you can't tear down the old one and build on top of that because we have no place to have a school.
They have to put over the football field.
They were, they suggested on that whole football field.
Something like that.
We should probably say on, at the high school site, I think we should.
Yeah, I see this point.
Because that's where we want to build there.
To become a K-12 campus.
Huh?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Okay, items for action. Dr. Dunn?
Before we move on Jeff, is it possible to have a meeting later this week instead of next Monday night? Just in case, I'd like to have Mitch run that in front of our, our attorneys to the final resolution. If he has to have-
That'll be done before Monday, right?
If there's any questions.
I mean, I have no problem meeting earlier, later this week if everybody else wants to.
We certainly can, and I can try to have official language from Carl's and Brady this week.
I'd like to know from Lisa what kind of impact we're gonna be looking at here.
I was gonna ask her for that.
Well, we should, we can get the impact for eighteen seven and nineteen nine.
No, because we're doing the two sides, just get the impact for it.
Big girls came at our most important night.
How about this, Larry, Mitch, if we decided Monday night, I mean, would, would the attorneys knowing full well that we're running up against a deadline and we're approving the resolution last minute, I mean, would that, would you be able to sort all that out Tuesday morning before it's emailed or uploaded or whatever you gotta do?
What I need, what they will do is give me the exact language that should appear on the ballot. All legal, above board, here we go. I, I would look at this almost like the governor and the line item veto. We're changing nineteen million to, nineteen point five million to nineteen million. They don't care.
Right.
Everything, it's all the language around that dollar amount that they will, that they will give us. So if, if you hear all sorts of outreach from people saying nineteen five is way too much money, you know, you have to take into consideration the information that Brad has shared with you, but you could, you can change that down, that's your choice to change the dollar amount. It's, it's the language that makes it all legal, that we're doing it. Here's the initial resolution and then be it resolved, remember? You did it the other way this summer and we had to come back a couple of times.
So we've given you a rough amount to go ahead with and we've specified that it's gonna be on this-
I will make sure that that's included, yes.
Or this address.
At the current both school, high school site, we can put that language in, I'll ask them how to, how to put that in.
Unless we don't want to specify that, but I'm assuming we do, okay.
My only concern is, is we've had very little input. And we need to let the community have a chance at this also. And let's say there is some questions, discussions that we do not have the answers for Monday night. And the last thing I want to say is, well, we, we can't change it because-
We don't have time though, Larry.
If we, if we have a meeting Wednesday night, like a, a community listening session or almost like a public hearing on this, then we would still have Thursday, Friday and Monday to take care of any new stats.
Do you think we would be out enough for the public to show them?
We have to give them the opportunity.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, and just think about, um, heck yeah.
All I'm saying Larry is, this resolution's on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, it's right here. And I even, I put out a Facebook post, I said, this is the language of the resolution, you're going to discuss and probably vote on Monday night, please come.
We have to give them an opportunity. And we have to meet and give Monday night, we will.
My argument is, this was the opportunity. Where are they posting? You know what I mean?
I'd like to give them an opportunity, that's, I was, I was a big advocate. That's why I'm on board with this.
If you have a meeting, understand, have a meeting Wednesday night, the newspaper's not out by then.
Yeah, that's true.
So nobody that reads a newspaper is gonna know, it'd just be all word of mouth or social media.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Let's do Thursday night, it should be a relatively short meeting.
Well, I think Monday night is the meeting that people would want to come to because that's the action night.
We could do it at five o'clock, I, I don't care about that.
Five o'clock Thursday?
Oh, maybe.
But on Monday night is when we vote on it, so why can't the public come Monday night?
We could vote on it Wednesday night too.
It doesn't, you don't have to wait till Monday, that's just the absolute deadline.
Yeah, why, why we- Very last minute.
Just so we understand Larry, so this meeting, the agenda with the resolution was in the paper.
Yeah.
And no one showed up. And now we're thinking, let's hold another meeting, let's not vote for it, and hope word of mouth gets more than Angie to show up. You know, and so, or Lisa, yeah, or there were a couple of people here, but I'm, I'm exaggerating.
And it was, it was for information and discussion on tonight's agenda.
You and I both thought we were gonna go on this.
But now we're going to move ahead with nineteen five. It seems like it's the board's will to do that now.
No one showed up and said, that is too much money. No one showed up and said that tonight.
I did. I don't understand.
Yep, there's other-
But I'm gonna change my mind, you can rest me.
We have to get answered before Tuesday, the deadline, we gotta have this done by Tuesday.
Right.
And if we wait till Monday night?
That's enough warning, they had this night, I agree with Aaron. And if we put this in the paper Wednesday that, hey, this is gonna be the time for a resolution, that's pretty good notice, I mean, you had this Monday and that Monday, that's, you know.
I can be out ordered, I will come to any meeting, but I, I can be out ordered, but I, I don't see the point.
Anyhow, can we have it five o'clock Monday night then, it seems like it's the board's will.
I'll be forthcoming, sure.
I don't think you're in any frills, like I said, it's the coverage but on everything that we have here in front of us. So, I mean, the only other way is say, okay, we need new numbers Brad, can I have some replants? We don't have the time to do that.
Still Monday night?
I mean, that's, I just, I-
So we're gonna need five o'clock Monday night?
We could, can we do a little early, five?
With your work and work.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, five o'clock Monday.
Alright.
And that will be the meeting to vote on the resolution language. So if everybody shows up and that meeting takes five hours?
No.
It takes five hours, but that's the night you have to vote on the official-
Monday to twenty first, five o'clock.
Well, so, let me ask you this Mitch, are there any other huge questions on the language that you need answers for? For this, you need an amount, all it's gonna say is new elementary school and you're gonna specify where it is. Is that anything else you need that could be up for huge debate?
No, not in this language.
I mean, I can see if we had laid out Larry, if there's gonna be a new baseball field and we're gonna do a new high school weight room and we're gonna do five new parking lots and we're gonna, you know, if we had laid that on a resolution, I can see how people would come in and say, wait, or we're definitely gonna route the bus route this way. You know, if it's in the resolution, then I can see people coming, hey, we can't do it that way for whatever reason. But if we're not even specified, then they have to, you know, oppose.
Right.
You know, and then we, and it becomes a design, community input during the design process.
The number could change to eighteen seven, it could change to eighteen nine or anything, I would say between eighteen seven and nineteen five. I, I don't think it'd be the, the board's will to vote nineteen five Monday night.
I can't legally, I mean.
You're right.
Okay, what do you have?
I mean, like once it's passed, we can't.
We could, he's talking about changing the resolution amount.
I think it's just important that in all the conversations that you guys have, if you're so worried about this nineteen five that you just tell people, even though, you know, you have to do a little light work there and say, we may not use all that. You know, those are, those are the conversations that we need to have.
I too think that it might not be very good to have a discussion and maybe have disagreement on whether it should be nineteen five or nineteen. It could almost horse peeze there and to, for the public to see that, you know, might not be, you kind of want to be all together if possible without a whole lot of hoopla.
They could rest me.
I think that eight hundred thousand over the twenty year life of the loan too is broken out really not that much. I, you know, I think if we were to run the tax implication, I don't think eight hundred thousand dollars is really going to be that much savings for a tax.
I just don't want to see us having to take things away and not having a school that we want, that we are really gonna be proud of having. A gym that, you know, is gonna be a full gym where high school could have practices if they need to, you know? Things like that that we want.
My comment is my prayers are that it passes.
That's what I'm saying is that more people at the point where we're spending too much already on the addition remodel to the elementary and not willing to spend an additional amount for the new school, so we'll know and then we're-
In my mind, in my mind, I mean, I, I think going under eighteen seven is dangerous. I think it puts us in a bad position to make us look really bad if this project does not give the community what they expected in a new school. But I think when you, when you're rounding eighteen seven and nineteen five in terms of a ballpark weighing that versus twelve versus nothing, I think that, you know, I, I think people are either gonna vote on this or they're not. You know, whether it's eighteen seven or nineteen five, that's not gonna make or break it for most voters, I would say. You know, because they're either gonna support this all in and they're gonna want us to do it right, or they're not gonna support it because they think it's way too much compared to twelve or, or they think we shouldn't have done anything in the first place. So, that, that's just my two cents. So, I mean, I, I think we're in this ballpark and people are gonna vote, vote for, I mean, we're, you can either round down to nineteen or round up to nineteen, it's basically a nineteen million dollar project. You know, give or take a few hundred thousand, people are gonna support that or they're not.
But tax impact will be revealed during listening sessions.
Absolutely.
Before-
I've already contacted Lisa and just said, when I, when we get a dollar amount, she's like, yep, I will get you everything I can and-
I agree, I think this is a legacy decision, this is gonna make an impact in the school district for the next fifty years just like the original elementary did in sixteen, in five. I mean, this is really significant.
And the closer we get to the referendum vote, it would be more spelled out as to what we're getting for that dollar amount versus what we went through tonight, it'll be more, you know, people will ask the question, what are we getting for that nine five?
Because they might get eleven nine and you're spending three, four million and fix up and not getting anything.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Right.
Items for action, Dr. Dunn's up.
These are-
Well, he's, he's-
I reviewed the agenda, I was on it.
He's the delegate.
So you can give him time. We can go through all of these and you can give input to them, or you can do what you've done in the past and say, Dr. Dunn, represent them in the Point School District to the best of your ability and use your sound judgment.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't want to poo-poo this, so these are proposed resolutions that will be adopted potentially at the convention, which is next week. Um, and I'm a delegate that can vote and can submit amendments or whatever. So, I, I would be happy to take the board's input to the convention if you feel strongly about any of these resolutions. I've reviewed them all, I don't find them, but they all seem fairly common sense. Most of them are updating outdated policies. You know, some of them address the issues with private school vouchers and dealing with funding with voucher schools. So if you have a strong opinion on that, clearly Wosby has a, has a pro-public education stance on, on that issue. So you're gonna see that in the resolution.
Not really, not really, we just send the delegates to use their own judgment.
I move that, Dr. Dunn, use his own judgment, represent the Point School District, have the WSB direction.
I will second that. Uh, is there, is there a certain, so we need to vote, right?
You'd have, you'd have a discussion?
Yeah.
And then you would vote on the motion.
No discussion.
I was just gonna say, I can bring a summary back.
Yes.
At the next board meeting.
Sorry, I don't remember that point.
My question was whether there's something expected, like do you have, are there specific things that want me to talk about?
Just a synopsis. Three minutes.
Not three hours.
Fifteen minutes for a resolution.
I said three, I said three minutes.
For all of them.
This is an hour long process, like hours long that they are, that you're gonna go through, so just so you know, follow up.
I'm ready.
And, um, follows the papers, signify by stay and I.
I agree.
Everybody opposed, motion carried. Okay, we have to give the, um, special ed spaces for enrollment.
Open enrollment, both the open enrollment and special education, open enrollment students. What you see here is projected enrollments for next year, we're going off of our current. We roll those numbers forward to next year, so our first graders are now second graders and so on and so forth. So where you see red would be areas where we are saying we would not take in essence a single open enrollment in that grade line. If it were a family that came in with a third grader, second grader and a first grader, we would try to make allowances to enroll that student. But if it was somebody that just came in and said, well, I have a second grader, that's the only student I have, we would say, I'm sorry, but our second grade is filled at this point in time.
Okay, so the one exception to that rule is if they come with a family of other students.
Correct.
This is open enrollment.
This is open enrollment. And that, that does not, this does not include anybody that moves into the, if they move into the district.
Right.
It's, it's, yeah, they're here. We've used your board policies, you'll see the column, it's eighteen in kindergarten through third, twenty, twenty-five and then recommendations. If you look at fourth grade and fifth grade, they're, they're close. I'm talking with Matt at our last admin meeting, those are numbers, those numbers can be worked, you know? If you added three students, that would be between the three classrooms, everybody's room would just go one student, it would be workable. You know, we're not gonna limit just the number of students there. So, this need, this requires board action again so that we can send this off. Angie is here to talk about the special education open enrollment. The recommendation is that we do not take any special, special education students.
That's kind of the way that's been the last turn.
The last couple of years, we've kind of been in that boat where-
A little, formatted a little differently, I did establish some program limits, which I couldn't find previously. So kind of giving like a cap for how many people or how many students we want per caseload at different grade levels. And then looking at the numbers that we currently have, there would be no spaces available for those programs. And then at the bottom, it specifically talks about staff that we contract services with. Oh, vision impairment, hearing impairment, that we would, that because of our space and staffing levels, that those programs are also closed or those related services are also closed for open enrollment so that we're not taking on additional costs to the district.
But again, if somebody moves into the district, then we have to take them.
If they move into the district, that's move into the district. This is solely that they wouldn't be able to open enroll. There's really no way that we can negate high cost need students except through the open enrollment process.
Okay, so exception here, family moves in, has a fifth grader, a seventh grader, special education. Okay, so exception here, family moves in, has a fifth grader, a seventh grader, a special education.
I would have to go back to mention what was done. Again, if it was a family, I.
I mean, open enrolled.
Yeah, if they're, if it's an open enrolled family, I'm not a hundred percent sure how the district has done that in prior precedents. There, the diff, I do agree that I think this is very similar to last year. I think last year's resolution said high school would take up to five. The other areas were closed. Um, but the high school did take them on. I, you can do a firm note in the case of a special education student. So I don't know if the district has prior precedent on, on that. And this doesn't affect the students who are already open enrolled. The special ed students who are already here are our students now. This is only for those that would be applying for next year.
Somebody like to make a motion.
I got a question on the.
Yeah, options.
On, I'm sorry.
On the option school, does this affect that?
So the option schools, they apply to our school, to the high school or the, I guess in a few cases, the middle school. But they become a member of the high school and then their placement could be at options. We do have a few students whose special education plan, their programming is serviced at options. But options is not all special education students. It's not high school students.
So, my question would.
There would.
It wouldn't affect the management's option school.
No, no, it would not affect, I mean, because the high school has no, no limits set through the public. It would affect.
They aren't open enrolled. They pay for a seat.
Yes, so we have a contract agreement.
That's not an open enrolled.
It's not an open enrolled. It stays their home.
So this policy does not apply to options kids?
Unless they're open enrolling through our high school and are a student with special education needs. And that was where they wanted to do their core, their education.
So then there could be a few that.
But all at options, all of the schools who have seats outside of our building at options, purchase that seat. It is not related to open enrollment at all. So if Shelsberg sends a student to options, they pay us a sale of, a fee for that seat. And they remain a Shelsberg student.
Correct.
They just attend our program.
That's in the sixty-six.
Right, sixty-six thirty agreement.
Okay, so non-special ed kids, open enrollment policy, the one exception is if it's a family.
Correct.
And it's, and it's only limiting those four grades.
Oh, that's great. But there, there is no current similar exception for special ed kids? If a special ed, if, if, if a student has a sibling that has special ed needs, do we make that exception as well? Or we have to decide whether.
For open enrollment?
For open enrollment.
I do not remember a case in recent history where, where that has happened, where something, when somebody was either accepted or denied in this circumstance. This would be, if something were to happen this upcoming school year, probably be the first time that I would be aware of anything like this happening. For open enrollment.
Do we have a plan for it?
And then, honestly, and then I would turn to DPI for their guidance. I would be able to show them that this is what was passed at the, at the board meeting and then ask for their guidance and how to do that when their siblings. There, there is, DPI does have guidance about if siblings are in and another child, you know, enrolled. I, I don't know. I would turn to them and, and have them guide us through the process.
Do you need this board to allow you to kind of make an exception if that's what DPI recommends?
No, I, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think so. I would think that the district administrator. Yeah, I mean, DPI would give us guidance and then it falls on the district administrator to approve and deny, so.
Sorry, last question. You, you said the limitations for accepting more open enrolled special ed kids are due to space and staff?
So, um, so the, the first half just talks about our different programs that we run at the different grade levels. And so I established kind of those space limits. So like ele, the elementary K through two program, I recommend that she has ten students. So those do those. And so based upon those numbers, we don't have any spaces open for our programs. The bottom two bullets, um, because of the current number of students identified with needs, current staffing levels, current contracted service levels, and space available. The district will not accept open enrollments for students who require services for vision impairment or deaf heart or hearing impairment, and then students who require occupational therapy or physical therapy. And that is largely related based upon the number of students we have and the contracts that we already hold with, with staff who are not a one hundred percent contracted. So, you know, if we don't hold a contract, you purchase the contract through the hospital or through CISA.
I guess what I'm getting at is if, if we had a new school that had sixty percent more special ed space or a hundred percent more special ed space, could you take more kids or is simply because you don't have enough staff?
Yes, but I, I think so, a good case of point is we had
You have to have more staff.
Eight, ten students move in this year alone. And that's part of this is, these numbers are established pending. We have evaluations going on now. We're foreseeing that more students will qualify throughout the year and we're going to have more students move in. In addition to our current projections of students, we're just gonna naturally have more students move into the district. So we're trying to foresee using the, the resources we have with the projections that we're guessing are already going to be coming down, so.
And I, and I understand that. And I have a little problem with, with this also. If, if we have a rock solid special ed program and kids could benefit from your services, it's sad to, to see you shut the door on them if they don't live in our district. Well, that would be, it wouldn't necessarily be shutting the door, but it would require you to approve hiring additional staffing.
And, and I think it, it really comes down to the money aspect. I want a rock solid program and I want people to be able to come here, for all students, those with and without disabilities, because they know our program is the best. But that comes with a price tag. And so the more you open enroll, the more, you know, the more students we're gonna get, the more staff we're gonna need to support those same students. And are we gonna get, are we gonna get enough open enrollment to offset your new staff or are you incurring more costs?
What I'm, what I'm getting at is, are you saying, I could take three more kids if I had another classroom? Or are you saying, I could take six more kids if I had another staff member?
It's staff member.
Okay.
The space, the space isn't it. It's, I, I, I don't, you know, I don't want to put, I don't want to say that our K through two teacher, I mean, she has ten right now, um, one has eleven, you know? But you're case managing those across multiple grades and for, to have them get the services and support they need, we're at resource capacity for staff.
And maybe it would help for the work. I have, I have the numbers. How many kids paired up with every one of your staff?
And I can give this to you right now, but I do, I think that we already talked about that.
You're, you're national.
To provide the services that we are now, and we all have.
How many middle school special ed teachers do you have?
We have, well, we have basically one and a half. We have one full time and then at the high school, we have, we have another one who splits between eighth and ninth grade. And then we have a full, like.
Okay, so I'm seeing only twelve for middle school? You have one and a half teachers?
Yep, and right now I have fifteen students at the middle school.
How many students overall?
Well, nineteen at the middle school.
So how many per, how many per teacher?
There's, uh, one has eleven on the caseload and one has four from the eighth grade class.
But she's also has high school.
Yeah, she also has high school, ninth, ninth grade as well. So it's split.
All right.
And makes a little messy because she goes between both buildings or both schools.
I may be mostly accept your special education recommendations.
And the non-special ed open enrollment.
And both, yes.
Give both policies.
Since we had so much discussion, do we need to have any more? Call a question, please.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stathis.
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, uh, Chambers.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Basting.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the, to about the entry doors.
Thank you. They're not meeting until Monday.
What is door number two? Where, where are these doors?
Door number two is right over here by the district administrator's entrance.
Is this all the doors?
This is the exterior door?
It's the exterior door. It's a, it's a three door.
Okay, the whole system, whole frame.
Whole system, everything, because it's rusting to the point where it can't be welded. And so that is everything that would replace all the exterior set of doors at this entrance.
And what's the total?
Total, it is fourteen thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and eighty cents.
That's for three doors, that's what you're saying, three metal doors.
That's a door, really expensive door.
Hand carved.
Three separate doors or three door units?
It's a three door unit. It's this, it's an exterior doors, all three doors. It's a, it's one unit. But there's three, three doors there. Do you remember, did Roger say what the last? The last one would have been more because it would have been a front entrance. The front entrance and that's a four door component. This is coming out of the capital, would come out of the capital maintenance allotment that you set aside for them so you could spend up to a hundred thousand dollars.
I think we already spent forty-seven of that.
You have spent forty-seven of that.
Yeah.
Correct.
Oh, I move that we approved purchase of the entrance doors for quality door hardware for fourteen thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and eighty cents.
I mean, if, if Roger says it's gotta be done, it's gotta be done in my opinion.
I'll say that.
Sorry.
I mean, is this bid out? I'm just asking, you know, was it, was it bid out?
He, he reaches out to whoever is interested and Quality Door has done multiple doors for us.
They're out of where?
Wisconsin Rapids, yeah.
And we, we use them in the packs.
Yes, they replace the two exterior doors going out towards the egg shop and the four at the main entrance.
Is, is this something that Roger would, he wouldn't have this done before they have the school year, this summer?
No, the, the hope is that with your approval tonight, they can be ordered. We would get them here, they'd be painted, um, over to Dodge or what have they. The name would, the place escapes me, you know, but they do all, like, you know, painting of cars and stuff. They would paint the metal. Smart plane, I believe, yes. And then they would be installed most likely over spring break. It takes them usually a couple of days. So they would come when there's nobody in the building.
Have they ever checked with blazards or keys?
And maybe, and keys might be the place that paints them as well. I would double, I'll double check with Roger to get you the, the name of who does the painting for them.
So is that an additional cost then?
The painting would be a small additional cost.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Did, did Roger quote or, or bid it out? Do you know Mitch?
I can ask him if he did. He gave, he said, this is who's done for us in the past. I don't know if anybody else puts in metal doors. I can ask him if he's ever done it in the past, bid it out.
I mean, we could just table this till Monday night and Mitch could ask Roger.
They've done it for us before, right?
Yes, they've done our other two replacements.
They've done a good job.
Yeah.
I mean, who else? Are there a lot of people that do metal doors?
Right, there are a lot of people who do metal doors.
I'm sorry?
Are there a lot of people that do metal doors?
Hollow metal exterior doors?
Yes.
Um, yeah, there's a lot of them out there. They don't last like aluminum, but they'll rust quicker.
So you're gonna put aluminum on, on the new.
Oh, yeah, aluminum.
So as, as really our professional in this area.
Let's talk over on this and not pass it.
Fourteen thousand for a three door system, is that?
Or you could pass it.
You get on.
In the ballpark, I would say. It's reasonable.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let's call a question, Angie.
Dahl.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stathis.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Basting.
Okay, approval of lawn, lawn tractor.
I just got a question about that. Um, why not lease the equipment, you know? I've often, I mean, equipment nowadays takes so much maintenance, you know, depreciation occurs so quickly. Why wouldn't you consider leasing or would they not lease one of the farmers?
I'm wondering if they want to lease.
I don't know. I would think that, you know, lawn equipment especially, I just, I just wonder if they'll lease.
The total on that's six thousand, right?
Is what we get traded here?
Yeah, ninety thousand.
In, in essence, in essence, this is, this is almost like a lease.
Oh.
The, the total cost of, of the new tractor is eighteen thousand dollars. We get traded, we have one, and the reason our trading is a little bit lower is due to the number of hours that are on the current tractor. But this is basically, you're paying three thousand dollars for this year and three thousand dollars for next year. This is.
How long do they last?
We, we're, in two years, we'll be coming back again.
So I have talked to Roger about this and personally, I think this is a really, really good deal for the school district.
Do I have a motion, okay?
So we need a motion next to me.
I move to approve the lawn tractor.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I should turn it down and transfer somebody somewhere.
Dunn.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stathis.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Basting.
Yes. Approve of the.
I'm gonna table, I'm gonna table number five.
I'll make a motion to table number five.
Until when?
Until we set for, until we.
December.
Till when?
December.
December what?
Our December meeting, regular quarterly meeting.
December two thousand twenty seven?
Now, when are we gonna table this February?
I'm sorry, February.
I, I would table the, uh, thing like HSR until our February regular meeting.
Okay, I don't.
I have Lindsay.
Okay, thank you.
So to the February meeting.
February, sorry.
February two thousand nineteen.
Doc, I got that you, uh, seconded that because he.
Oh, did he make it all right? I'll second that. That's okay.
Yeah, I think about questions.
We have to vote on the table.
I'm, we're tabling.
All those that did were sitting by by say and I. Anybody opposed?
Okay, there, there has been some questions?
You got your, uh, diesel stands ready? You driving all the way back home?
Yeah.
Same travels.
Oh, yeah. You got milk in the morning.
Thank God, but, but gotta be up in the apprentice attempt, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Good evening. So. You have, there's, there was some confusion as to what would happen. If, if the referendum in April is successful, we would revert back to the original calendar. So in essence, we're gonna try to public, publicize two calendars. Successfully at the referendum, this is the calendar we have. We're not starting until after September one. Okay? If, um, the referendum is unsuccessful, this is the calendar that you had approved in December. We would be starting the week of August twenty-fifth. There would be five school days in prior to September one. So we would publicize both calendars and make it as obvious as possible that if we're building a brand new building, we don't have to adjust to start native school. If we don't have a new building and HSR gives us a new design and we're starting construction and, and some of that might depend on whether or not they can get us started, we might need to start prior to September one. So, just, uh, I guess one more time to formally approve both of these calendars based on what happens in the April referendum.
But everything works in this calendar.
There are a hundred and seventy-six teacher days. There are, everything that we need in both calendars is there. It's identical overlay of the number of face-to-face days and instructional hours and so on and so forth. I'll make a motion to approve the calendar. For two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Do we have a second? Oh, sorry.
Dunn.
Dunn.
I was making, yeah, sorry, I blew my pitch. Didn't use this guy's voice.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Okay, credit card and bills payable.
Where does Roger get his snowshells? Not to question Roger, but.
I worry it's sixty five dollars.
It's a good snowshower, sixty eight. It's a good snowshower.
I'm not, I don't, I don't know.
Power coming.
What happened?
Had, sorry Roger.
Maybe.
Just moves the snow on its own. Probably.
Could be a package, dude.
And what snow, by the way? Why does he need one?
The old ones could be worn off.
Don't say that.
A little various, yeah.
Jeff, are we moving on to the credit card statement in the accounts payable separately or can we discuss all of them? We need credit card statements separately.
We do it however you like.
Okay, okay. Okay.
You can be together or.
Yeah. Depends on who wants to make the motion. Well, no, I have a question about the accounts payable. That's why if we're gonna vote on the credit card statement, I would suspend my comments until we get to that. Okay.
Uh, I had a question on, it was a, or sorry, Doc, you were looking for something.
I'm looking for it, you go ahead.
I have a mileage to instruct coaching training, so. Where you at my page is at? That's on page forty seven, on the bottom of forty seven. I was trying to wrap my head around that. Is that for school? Is that? Doll, you know what that is?
Um, I'm looking.
On the bottom of page forty seven.
It's on the middle, middle of the page.
Okay.
What's the date for who?
For Matt Renwick?
Yeah.
Well, then don't ask me.
Well, I don't know why they ask you.
Just because coaching, everybody out there with coaching, coach.
Instructional coaching?
Instructional.
Um, we have some instructional coaches, is that, so I'm assuming that there were probably a couple of other staff members that went along and Matt drove?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I was just kinda like.
He put in the mileage and that was, it was an instructional coaching conference.
Okay, yeah, that's what that was.
I found my question. Tell me about the Milwaukee Bucks tickets for nine hundred sixty dollars or whatever.
Um, the, the high school boys' basketball team went down on Christmas break and played in a tournament. So I believe that they actually reimbursed the school for that money. They had money in a, in like a fundraising account.
One twenty one, it was then reimbursed.
But they had tickets to go to the Milwaukee Bucks the night before. They played the very next day down in that same location. So they basically reimbursed the school district for that money.
Okay, got it, thank you. Yep, so it's not one twenty one, it's just we're getting reimbursed by that play.
One sixteen, or whatever.
Yeah.
You didn't see us on TV yet.
Sounds like, yeah, like, maybe, I'm trying to go next time. That sounds like fun. Yeah, they're kinda showing up, I mean.
On page forty three, uh, under, well, five, three, two, seven, Dixie Educational Services grant, grant rating.
Uh-huh. Well, that's probably for the.
Is that for the options school?
I, yes, it's the charter school grant. We had not been successful a year ago and, um, the decision was made to go ahead and apply again. Dixie was a part of the application a year ago. The board had a conversation or was brought up, um, over the summer. I remember the conversation was, you know, to continue to use Dixie for that, for that purpose.
Okay.
So.
Amanda came and basically got that kind of big approval, wasn't it?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
That money from the grant? Does that money fund the grant or do we pay her that money?
That money comes out of the options and education budget.
So it doesn't come out of the grant she wrote? It's not like administration for the grant?
No, because we have not, we have not been awarded the grant.
Oh, she just wrote it.
She's, she's in the process of writing it again, yes.
How much is the grant for, Mitch, do you know?
Hundreds of thousands.
Do you know how much that option's worth?
I, I don't know the dollar amount of, I mean, it would be for sustaining itself as a school. Like, I don't know the exact dollar amount.
I think, I wanna say, I think the, well, it's probably changed up, but like the first year, you almost got like three hundred thousand dollars to explore.
I wanna say I heard like three fifty, but I don't know my head numbers in my head.
And then the following year, you become your own school district.
That's only one percent.
I think if we get it, it's worth it.
That's a charter, okay.
Yeah, it becomes its own school.
All right.
Okay.
You're gonna check on the Bucks tickets to make sure that the booster club.
Oh, they did.
They do, I remember signing the sheet for, there's green sheets and blue sheets that come across my desk for the, out of the fundraising money that programs do. So it was paid for through fundraising.
So, does anybody like to make a motion to approve the credit card and the bills payable?
So moved.
Thank you. Somebody want a second hand?
I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments?
Do you go through everyone these, Mitch, these expenses and validate, look at their.
They all cross my desk.
Okay.
And then Marcia has pulls them all, all the accounts payable, so I can go back in and look at them specifically. So I can go ahead and look what is, you know, I, I know one hundreds, something that starts with a one is for an elementary program. A two is middle, four is high school, eight is district, so I can go back in and look.
Sure.
And, and see.
That money comes out of their individual budgets.
Correct.
If Matt gets something, that comes out of his budget that he's already budgeted for.
Correct.
And you can't, you can't spend anything outside the budget without your approval, correct?
Correct. Now, there are some, I will point out, there are some coming out of the library, but that money will get reimbursed when we get our common school funds, which is all for library expenses. So some of those accounts are over budget right now, but knowing that common school funds will replace that money and balance that account out before the end of the school year.
And many, a majority of the credit card are on purchase order as well. So all of these charges are budgeted and.
Basically pre-approved.
Yes, pre-approved. It's just when ordering, it's a convenience to use the credit card to get it ordered from Amazon or wherever, you know, Book Source or whatever.
Okay, can I call a question, please?
Doll.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stathis.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Basting.
Just in employee services, we have, um, motion on this, Christopher Clark, or do you wanna talk about it first?
Um, the, the employee that left had been in the district for a few years and was actually making more on a per hour basis. Mr. Clark comes to us with a CNA background, more a medically fragile students, or we feel we're getting great coverage and coming in at a reduced cost. So this is a, we had somebody leave, uh, and you acted on their resignation at the last board meeting, and this person is a replacement. And like I said, coming in at basically at a cost savings to the district.
Insurance?
Um.
I'm assuming single insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, does anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the instructional assistant, Christopher Clark.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? This is, this came, they recommended from you.
Yes, we had a committee, uh, the school nurse, myself, the lead special education teacher that he works with, and one of the former educational assistants that worked with that student, and all four of us would recommend him.
Thank you.
As would I.
As would many people within the district, but it was, it was a very unanimous recommendation by the full committee that interviewed him.
He's been so big for us, so he's excellent.
Okay, good. Call a question, please.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stathis.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Doll.
Yeah.
Dunn.
Yes.
Basting.
Yes.
So, board election timeline now.
January second at five P M. was the deadline for anybody wishing to file candidacy. We have three seats available and all three board members came in and filled out the paperwork, and they're the only people to come forward. At this time, I guess, we were discussing today that someone could come in and they have to register to be a write-in candidate. Uh, and they have up until the Friday before the election to do so. Is that correct? I remember that's the language you were reading off today, Angie.
If somebody registers to be a write-in, could they be part of the forum?
Great question, and we had that conversation today too. Uh, we think if, if they come in and fill out the paperwork and register to be a write-in.
Before the date of the forum?
Before the date of the forum, we would invite them to the forum to be a part of that. So their opinions would be heard and answer the same questions that the regular board candidates would be answering.
Okay.
Um, other than that, we're looking at trying to find a date for the candidate forum and open houses and.
I think we might have a date for the candidate forum. Larry confirms the Wednesday, March thirteenth worked for Tony and Andy, so that was, so waiting to check. So Larry, yeah, he thinks. Okay, so March is a pretty busy month with spring break and everything and there.
What time are you thinking?
Seven-ish is usually when we do it, so.
All right.
All right, we have a date.
Sure.
All right. It's not Ash Wednesday, Ash Wednesday is the sixth, you can check that out.
Nine hundred and seventy seven?
Seven.
Building administrators, Vicki, do you have anything you wanna share going on in your building?
Sure do. Um, it's been three years since we started our literature circles in our middle school, and so I wanted to update, um, everyone on that because they've been very successful. Mrs. Riley did a survey, um, with our seventh and eighth graders. And almost all of our students have experienced literature circles either in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade. Over eighty-five percent of our students prefer reading in literature circles opposed to the whole class novels. Ninety-eight percent would describe their experiences working in lit circles as mostly positive. They prefer the lit circles, uh, for these top reasons. Number one, they get to choose which book they read within a gemra. And they can pick a book that fits their interest and reading level. Number two, they can read ahead of their schedule without, uh, waiting for their class. Three, their group motivates them to finish their book. And four, weekly discussions help clear up any misunderstandings. So if a student doesn't really understand the book, they can, um, check in with their classmates to maybe help them understand a little bit better what they're reading. And, um, we've, we've seen increase in our, in our reading scores. And so our, um, reading teachers, um, highly recommend our, our lit circles that we have going on. And, um, uh, Mrs. Riley has, um, years of experience with lit circles because she used those, uh, when she was teaching at Belmont also. So she's, um, um, she regularly has students choose to read the books on their own. And often when a book is assigned as a whole class, um, at least one student has already read it or would finish before the class in their groups. So they can also help lead the discussion, so it's very beneficial. Um, monster pillow pets, I don't know if you saw this on Facebook. But, um, it was a collaborative project between Mrs. McColly's seventh grade art class and Mrs. Radfead's second grade, uh, class. There's more info on the district's face, Facebook page, but the second graders, um, did a project with monsters. And then our seventh graders went down and they actually, um, designed the, the monsters and actually made the monsters with them and then created a book. Uh, sixth grade students and staff attended, uh, author Patricia Palaco's presentation at the elementary on Friday afternoon. Many wonderful comments from our sixth grade students and our sixth grade teachers just about, um, this author's, uh, presentation in, and visit. The kids were just buzzing about it when they, when they came back.
I heard a lot of good things about that visit.
Yeah.
Does, does it cost to bring an author like that in?
So, so I don't know, I don't know if there was a cost to us, but there's a retired teacher from Belmont who, when she taught for thirty-five years, did a lot with Patricia Palaco. Um, and so she did a lot of fundraising through Belmont. She was the initial person who got her lined up. So she was in Belmont last Monday, she was in Sun Prairie Tuesday and Wednesday, and she was like in Lake Mills or something Thursday and then came here Friday. So I don't know if Mineral Point put in, but there was fundraising outside of our school that helped get her here from one of the neighboring districts.
And I, and I would say, um, our two librarians, old Chris and Maggie are, they're excellent at bringing, um, authors in.
Virtually, I know that they brought a lot in already this year, and so. Mr. Renwick had to leave, but that, he had asked if, um, I would speak on, on behalf of just saying how much elementary students enjoyed Patricia Palaco. I believe he sent Mitch a couple of links, um, that they've put together, like a video of her time there from Friday that, um, I think he said he emailed it to you, Mitch, that you could share out, um, if you wanted to, but I. I, I know every, every teacher, you know, if they went to the presentation in the morning, they were buzzing that day about how great it was and trying to get everybody else to make sure they got down there through that day, so, um, and very well received by the students too.
Both my kids talked about her.
I haven't heard buzz like that, about it, about that in a long time.
And I will also say that I, I, I don't remember who sent it out, but there was a comment, I believe it was Miss Upina that sent it out to the elementary staff about Patricia saying how impressed she was with our students and, you know, basically saying that she's been to a lot of schools and our students are above, a step above many other places that she's been to. She was really, really impressed with our student, student body when they were there, so. So I, this is our, is this the fifth grade interview, the fifth graders were?
It's been like six or ten minutes.
A little later. If you had told me that this is what I was going to do for a living, I would never believe you. Because I couldn't read till I was fourteen. Couldn't do math, I couldn't do anything as usual. Had a terrible time. And here I am. Okay, what's your name?
Dara.
What's your name?
Graham.
Graham, ooh, how do you spell it?
D R A N G R A M.
Yep, and I lived in Australia for a million years, and one of my very good friends there, his name was Graham. What's your name?
Jaden.
Jaden, okay. Got any more questions? It depends on the book. Uh, if it's a very long, protracted story, obviously it's gonna take longer to do. Um, I don't know, on average, from the time I'm thinking of a book, until you see it on the bookshelves, about a year and a half has gone by. My involvement, though, in actually writing a book is only about three or four months. It's not very long. But if, when you send it off then to the publisher, you've got line editors and designers and all other people that are gonna be working on the book, and they take months. But I kind of hit it and run.
Where do you give your information or ideas for your books?
Kind of the same place you do. I love to watch people. Uh, tomorrow morning, for instance, I'm heading back to Michigan and I'm taking a train. So I'm gonna be on the Empire Builder that'll be coming from Seattle. And it'll end up in Chicago, and then I take a regional train back to Battle Creek, Michigan, because that's where I live in Michigan, right down there. And I love to sit in the, the train station and watch people. I like to listen to their conversations. Just being with you kids, we'll talk about things, that inspires me. Current events do. If I watch a news program on television, although the news can be so depressing. But that'll inspire me to, to write stories.
Wish to see more.
And certainly my family, they're great storytellers and they're awesome.
The teacher said she had a, she had a great message about bullying in school. A lot of her books have to do with bullying or, um, and one of them is focused about, uh, Roma special education students and making sure that they understand they're needed and wanted and, and worthy, and she thinks it's very inspiring, actually, to, to just overall. And great stories to tell.
Anything else to start?
You know, we're just, uh, what can I say? We're just busy all the time down in Oklahoma.
Um, I have a couple of dates. I wanted to let you know that this Friday during our in-service, Justin Leonard and I are doing an education.
are doing an education, or a training for our educational assistants on CPI model, which is the Crisis Preventive Institute. Basically like preventative de-escalation strategies and being proactive when students are educated and how to respond to them. So that will be, Justin and I were trained this summer in that approach. We will do it for all the assistants this Friday. And then over the summer next year will be a PD opportunity for our staff as well. We have to have at least one person in the building trained, but we have found that it's beneficial just for classroom management overall, everywhere. So we will be training a lot more than one. And then just one other highlight, earlier this year I did a presentation about the C-COT team that Justin is part of, and he actually was invited to be part of a statewide presentation to, there were over a hundred people who Skyped into this. Other C-COT members, CISA employees, basically on rural schools. Because our C-COT team is one of the strongest teams in the state. And so Justin did a question and answer presentation last week on Thursday. He was invited to do that. He sent the link, I shared it with Mitch this morning. If it's something you would wanna listen to, Mitch has that as well. About an hour after he got done last Thursday, the transition coordinator for CISA III sent him a message that somebody from an area school had contacted him. She was in charge of supporting two very rural C-COT teams in CISA VIII. And her comment was, you know, I read all the C-COT guidance, but it just didn't click for me until I heard someone else speak about how they put it into practice. And then commented about how Justin's website was really inspiring for them as a group. So I just wanted to kind of give him some recognition for the really hard work he does with that team and the benefits. I mean, he has a great example on the webinar about, you know, before he was here, he didn't really know what it was since he's been here. And he has a great story about a student that he worked with who went on to school, got some financial support through DVR, had all those stuff put in place, finished school, and is working at Cummins after getting a welding degree. So just the purpose of that program is to really make sure that we're transitioning our students to success. And he has some really good examples of that. The county communities on transition. I believe Tony is a member from, in his professional life as well. But it combines the area schools, Iowa and Lockit County are combined together, so the eleven or thirteen or whatever schools it is in the area with the agency representatives who can support students during school and afterwards. So it's really collaborative, all about job exposure, work experience, making sure their independent living is ready, all of their connections are made when they go. So they have, we have, like I said, we have a very active C-COT team. They offer three events a year, which is three really, really good events. And a lot of teams don't have any in different counties. So we're really one of the premier teams in the state. And so I, and Justin's done a lot of the legwork on a lot of those events. So I wanted to make sure that he got his shout out there. The last thing I wanted to do is just share this.
They're all sending to you.
Exactly, I went in and told Mitch. So kind of basic, so you guys know or maybe you don't know. In the special education world, there's kind of three different funding sources that we use. We can use Fund 10, just general funds, which typically we just see at the end of the year with transfer service stuff. We can use what's called Fund 27 funds. Those are state money that the state allocates for special education. We primarily use those for our teacher's salary. We get reimbursed, that's the twenty-six percent, or twenty-six cents on the dollar we get back. The third pot of money is called flow-through. It comes from the federal government. It's allocated into a preschool allocation and then a rest of special education allocation. We're given that flow-through money for twenty-seven months. So the money that we were given July first of two thousand seventeen goes away at the end of September of two thousand nineteen. If you don't use it, you lose it after twenty-seven months. And essentially, we have a big pot of money that has not been used. I can't tell you the exact number because the state hasn't given us the carryover amount. But from what Marcia and I can piece together, it's in excess of probably a hundred thousand dollars. And so I spoke with our staff. We purchased a van earlier this year that's coming out of that flow-through money. That was one thing that we could use as a resource. Again, I've been working closely with Marcia and Mitch on this. But essentially, I reached out to the staff and said, hey, give me a wish list. What kind of flexible seating, adaptive learning things? If you were given some resources, what would they, what would you want them to be in your classroom? Largely focusing on the, on the access to the learning environment. There are a couple other things. So this is what the staff came up with. I didn't total it up, but the total is just over twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's a lot, I understand that. The first one, the assessment, is a cognitive achievement assessment. It is a non-verbal IQ test. So it is one that we do not, we don't own a non-verbal. Our school psychologist earlier this year has borrowed it three separate times from a neighboring district. So it's just kind of in the plan that this would be a good utilization. The curriculum, the LLI, we purchased, I think it was a teal a few months ago. The one that we purchased a few months ago was basically levels W through Z. So like seventh and eighth grade level. This level is R through U. It is mainly fifth and sixth grade level. Ideal for our middle school sixth graders or our later middle school kids who are maybe not at grade level. So there was, we don't have this kit. It's kind of the one in the middle that we're missing. That is a reading one, yeah. So we have the ones before it and we have the one after, but we don't have this one. And in talking with our instructional coach for the middle school, she said this would be perfect and ideal for a lot of our sixth graders right now. And then the rest is furniture needs. If you've walked through any of the buildings, I will say the middle school, or the elementary school, I think it's a little bit farther along in some of their flexible seating. You know, I've kind of included the names here. The first couple on the list are our special education teachers specifically in their classrooms. They're very, very traditional yet with desks or tables. And so we're looking at just some different seating habits. But I really opened it up, so like the Zuma series floor rocker is basically a rocking chair without legs that you can sit on the floor. It allows movement for the students back and forth. And you can see that there were three different teachers that, when I said, hey, what do you want, without even speaking to each other, they all three put the same thing on the list. So I just wanted, I guess I'm not asking for any passing now, but I wanted to just kind of put this on your radar that once that flow-through money carryover comes through and we really know what it is, that this might be basically a way of what I'm calling it spend-down so that we can utilize our special education resources to benefit in the classroom environments. Part of, I know it's a big number, but at the last item, there are two classrooms. One is a special education resource room, and I believe the other one is Mr. Smith's room in the English room. Neither of their smart boards is working, so I also included, they're touch and go. Like, Mr. Smith, you can't write on it. Ms. Walters will work one day and not the next, and MP Tech's been there like four or five times. So I just asked MP Tech for some quotes. And then, you know, as we go through, Mitch and I can discuss on those specifically. There's some sensory things, some mindfulness activities, some furniture, kind of all around.
Have you seen the, like the new TVs?
Yeah, and I, and I actually just talked to MP Tech Rachel when she was here today. So when I emailed her, I said, hey, we're looking at possibly doing this, can you give me some quotes? She gave me three different sizes, three quotes. And then I saw her and said, are we moving more towards like the TV than the smart board? Because hers were smart board quotes. And she said she still feels the smart board has more capabilities than the TV. But if the district as a whole is moving towards that sharp type thing, I'll go back and get a quote from them too. This was just a starting point, so.
And why do you have so much money?
So I'm brand-new, I, I don't know. Some people like to have a cushion. This is from two thousand seventeen. So some people like to have a cushion, and most schools do have a cushion. I've never quite seen one this large, and I don't know the rationale. Some different things were reallocated this year. So like two of, the salaries of two of the educational assistants is coming out of this year's budget. Or the EC teacher assistant that you guys passed a few months ago is coming out of the preschool money. But the last thing I want to do is not use that money that the federal, the federal government has given us. I don't want to lose it, and.
Where's this from?
It'd be the flow-through money from federal dollars. And, you know, in all honesty, we did lose some preschool money this year that Marcia and I were unaware of that were sitting there until we got the email that was said, hey, turn in your slips, you're gonna lose it, and we didn't have any slips to turn in.
And did you consider that you haven't maybe submitted enough on the Christmas list?
You know, and I, and I will go back to the teachers, I mean.
It looks like you said twenty-nine thousand, there's a hundred thousand.
And that's, you know, and, and we spent twenty, we spent twenty-three on, on the van. And then, you know, I, I basically, I'm assuming that it's kind of like the money, you know, the salaries from this year could actually be applied to last year's. But essentially, you get, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollars last year and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. And if we go into last year's, then I still have this year's left. So just trying to make sure we're utilizing it.
What did you expect out of Schlesberg?
I think, I didn't have the money in Schlesberg, Mr. Cruiser did.
Does it have to be special ed? Does it have to be?
So it has to benefit students in special education. And that's why like when we're doing furniture for classrooms, we're doing environmental supports for where our students are being supported in. So, you know, I have no problem buying flexible seating for an English room because our students are all in English. And so it is helping them in their learning needs and environmental need, or needs and supports in the classroom.
And you had said earlier with me that we have lost money.
So we lost just under eight thousand dollars of preschool money at the end of September. That Marcia, Marcia and I basically got an email in October that said, you need to submit your receipts through September thirtieth for preschool, three, four, and five-year-olds. And it was like seventy-seven hundred or seventy-eight hundred. And we didn't have anything to submit, so we lost that money. And that's what I don't want to happen with this. So I wanted to work with Marcia and get a really good picture on what we have for carryover. So I will tell you, we get ninety-eight hundred dollars of preschool money. We had ninety-three hundred left from last year, we got ninety-eight hundred this year. The aid you're projecting is six thousand. So I told our EC and 4K teachers, give me a wish list of how we can bring, what do you need in your classroom? That we can bring into our three, four-year-olds in our classroom. So I'm, I'm trying to benefit everybody, all of the students with the focus of the special ed students in mind in those rooms.
I support, I support the special ed students. In my, in my office, some of them are frequent visitors.
And, and I, I can't tell you the rationale. I will say that it's not uncommon. I have, I have a friend that, when he walked into Lancaster, had hundreds of thousands of dollars of carryover. And he essentially did the same thing. I mean, he went on a shopping spree and told the bookkeeper, said, stop buying things. So some people just do carry that over, thinking if we have these, if we have a population of students move in or we need to hire a teacher. You know, if our resources are too thin and we need to hire, it is kind of a savings for them. But we need to be.
He means like a special ed contingency fund?
Kind of, but that money doesn't stay there forever, is the, is the bigger thing. You know, it's gonna go away, and this money is gonna go away at the end of September. So I wanna plan ahead.
You can use it for salaries?
You could, but you don't get the twenty-six cents back on the dollar. And so some schools, and this might be Schlesberg, some schools might not have carryover because they use it to pay for their salaries of their educational assistance. Most districts use state money for that because they get the percentage back on, on that. And then there's some other loopholes, like if I use, and we're doing this now. So if I pay an educational assistant with federal dollars, I can't do Medicaid billing for them because that's reimbursing federal dollars when you're already paying for them with federal dollars. So then there's some double dipping. So it's kind of an offset. We lose some money in a different area because we're using the federal money this way, so.
With these expenses, Angela, do we get aid from the state the following year then?
So the state aid doesn't change, that maintenance of effort state aid is gonna stay the same. So state and federal are two different pots in special ed. So essentially, special ed can pull kind of from three. The federal one, the state one, or the regular Fund 10 balance.
So it doesn't affect it either way?
It doesn't affect it either way. So we do, there are certain things, like we do pay like orientation and mobility out of federal dollars because the state doesn't reimburse you for him. Or, you know, like I said, we are doing a couple salaries out of them, but, but they're, they're, you could lose things by using that for salaries in other ways.
Could you, could you buy playground equipment?
Adaptive playground equipment with like an, with like a wheelchair accessible swing, probably.
Why would we give up that money?
So, you know, like years and years ago, you used to be able to buy iPads and computers and now they monitor that a little closer because schools have one-to-ones. So I can't quite get away with as easily, but there is, if the, if the playground equipment had wheelchair accessible items, I'm sure that we could.
Questions here?
Yes.
I don't have the answer of your questions, Dr. Dunn, because I'm just coming into this.
So do you know where this money's coming from and why wasn't it in the budget?
We don't know, we don't know the total dollar amount?
Why not?
So the, the doll, the federal dollars change every year. So we can do like, I'll do a predicted, like in the spring, I'll look back at kind of like the last three-year cycle and then project what the federal dollars will be.
What formula do they use?
It's the federal government, I don't know.
It's verbal right now.
Right, but no, seriously, is it based on, is it based on special ed enrolled students?
It's based upon, yes. And I'm sure it has to do with a number of special ed students in the, in the district, yes. So typically, there's somewhat close.
It's allotted every, on a three-year cycle?
No, it's allotted every year, and you can use that for twenty-seven months.
Your question is how did we not know about this?
How did we not use it last year?
Yes, how did we?
How long has this been flowing through?
Forever, I mean, it's the funding sources, the funding source.
Yeah, it was never mentioned as a funding source.
I mean, this is not chump change.
No, it's, it's not chump change.
That's the other question, how many years did we lose it not knowing about it?
I would like, I would like to think none, but I'm not here.
We had Luke here before.
I don't have an answer for you.
And I don't either.
Because I was not aware.
So I, I, I will say.
Money from the federal government. Well, I knew, I knew all the item of flow-through, but I didn't know how much. I didn't know where it was going, I didn't know if those were allocated somewhere.
Well, you're right.
But, but we also want to make sure it's being used.
You're, you're exactly.
But I, I think we use the money.
I don't wanna give it up.
A lot of those school districts, I really do. I think they're good. But I understand what you're saying, it's caused to all of us taxpayers, that's for sure.
We'd like to see it go to something like that.
Yeah, me too.
So, so again, I just, I, I'm gonna wait and Mitch and I talked about it and, and we felt it was maybe best to kind of give you a master list now so that when we came back and we knew what the carryover was, we could come back and either go item by item or if you guys have questions on what any of the items on here are.
I have a question, Angela.
Yeah.
Well, with our seven hundred enrolled students, do we have a higher percentage of special ed students in your school?
Than the state?
Than the state average?
We are lower. So we have, right now, we have eighty-eight enrolled students in special education, which is just under ten percent, which is lower than the state average of twelve percent. So typically, twelve to fourteen percent is kind of what you see as the average. And I'll do an end-of-the-year kind of presentation for you also on numbers of where we started, how many were exiting, what our percentage is with the state. That number has, the percentage has gone up already this year. We've identified quite a few students this year.
theoretically, we could hire staff with that if we needed to, and could.
So I think our, isn't our number starting out seventy?
Yeah. I might, so limiting the next special ed actually might not be the wisest move. But since we don't really know the exact dollar amount, it's.
That's the ending part, that's the, that's the gain.
And I think too that, you know, there are, there are pros and cons of using federal dollars for salaries. And, and I can certainly try and, you know, come back and kind of share the pros and cons of that as well. Because there are, there are pretty few schools that will use federal dollars for salaries because you lose out on that reimbursement.
But at some point, you're gonna have everything you need or want. So instead of giving the money back, we need to put it in staff.
It, it always is changing, so.
What I would like, if it's not too much to ask, I know you're both very busy, but I think a flow-through funds 101 presentation for the board, I think would be very helpful as we start into budget negotiations. And when we start, April, start talking budget, March?
Mitch, the state does have a special ed funding PowerPoint already that we could kind of just bring in and pull up. It's available on their website, just kind of as the basics of special ed funding.
There's gotta be a way that we can at least make an educated guess.
Yeah, and that's what I said, I, I, you know. Yeah, and that's what I said, I, you know, typically, like when I was doing it last year, I kind of did like a three-year cycle and then averaged those three years, so I had a projection. And then, you know, again, looked at kind of like the trends over the years of what people requested or cost of different things.
And you're probably pretty close, don't you think?
I, I think so. I mean, I, last year was really the first year I had any of my hand in the budget in Schlesberg. But I was working with a superintendent who had done it for 30 years. And when I took him my figures and Excel spreadsheets, he said, yep, that looks pretty close and that's about how I do it too, so.
When do you actually get the final say as to how much?
Marsha said she's really surprised it's not here already. I don't know if maybe the furlough really does have something to do with it. Title carryover, the title one carryover came over at the first of January and she said it's usually always January. So we do expect it anytime, but she's, she said she's pretty surprised it's not already there.
So you have that month basically to decide how you want to spend it.
Which is kind of why I'm planting the seed now, yeah.
Okay. Sounds great.
All right.
Thank you, Angela.
I talked to student council. There's an issue, kids with earbuds or headphones or whatever and teacher concerns, mom, a distraction. They want it immediately denied. And I said, after some thought, I said, let's send it to the student council. I'm trying to get a lot of things to run through the student council to have a voice in what this is. So at the next student council meeting, this will be an issue that'll be discussed, you know, is it a distraction? We know for some students, it really is a distraction, you know, what is the need? Tell us why? As students, you feel you need to be able to have access to the music on your MacBook or whatever the case may be. So trying to bridge this gap and use the student council in ways that give direction back to the high school, back to the building level. So that's one issue that we've been working on and working with the student council. Final exams, everybody, please, final exams, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I don't need a two-hour late start, although we can get our exams in. I need a normal schedule for the next three days and that will allow us to get our exams all in. Friday is a work day for the district, so staff will be reporting to work. I have, Dr. Lindsay had asked about this and finally, finally got the last price quote of blacktop and lights. Talked to A and B Electric and it's about just under fifteen thousand dollars to put two poles out there. That's their recommendation, two poles and two lights on each pole and.
Is that gravel parking lot that?
On the east side of the football field. And then Iverson, we've been waiting for Iverson to come through town and be able to give us a quote and then Roger just got one. Just a little over fifty-three thousand to blacktop that. Their recommendation is to add, because it's been so long with the gravel there, they, a recommendation to add about eighty-five hundred dollars more base and then blacktop over the top of that, so we'd bring it in.
Square footage?
Hot mix three inches.
The reason I'm asking is, Mike's parking lot has a spend business up in Appleton area and they're doing cement parking lots up there at all the schools because he's got the price so that it's almost the same and you have virtually zero maintenance.
Says, threatening to take parking lot approximately 2,800 square yards.
I'm just curious.
And that's a three-inch thickness.
I think I'd be happy just with lights and the gravel.
Gravel's traction in the winter.
Oh, yeah, sure is. Real traction, even if you're walking.
You know, eventually I would love to see a sidewalk that came off the backside of the football field down into that parking lot and make it a little bit easier for people to get in and out in that area, but that's down the road. But I know you had asked for that and we finally got them, so I just wanted to share that with you. Couple of budget items.
Well, would anything change with, if there's something done here?
Well, I don't think we can add that in on that.
I mean, but would there be any?
But it might be a time to do it, because we might get a lot better deal if they're here to do like. We wouldn't be able to use referendum funds to do it.
No.
Negotiate.
I would probably wait on both of them projects and tip, if the referendum passes, for instance, that gravel lot could be a staging area.
Yeah, sure, good.
Kind of replant lighting. We'll find out, I guess, we have all mixed up this summer.
Right, yeah.
And it's not perfect. Is there, is there a light pole out there? No, a light pole?
No, it's not at all.
How much do you, how much do you like rent a light pole that like construction crews use for game night, something like that?
See, light may enter, they may put something up out there, of course. I could look into what it would cost.
I was hoping the city would do it, I'd say. Yeah, they do, yeah.
Hold on.
You know, that would help.
A portable system, like how?
Great, yeah.
I, I think it's great, yeah.
I can look into it. I know, you know, they, I do remember, and Vicki could probably speak to this, when Darlington had their first home game and rented them.
Oh, boy.
There were four of them there and they all run basically off of like a diesel engine. So you have that noise going on to run, to run, to run those lights, but I could check into what it would cost just to get an idea. And it's not completely dark with.
It's pretty dark. We had a number of people complaining that they almost got hit.
Maybe we could just turn more of the football fields.
People coming out of the lot.
Exactly.
It's really quite dark.
Just take it, just adjust it.
Fire is there.
I'd be like.
Or add something to the backside of one of those poles.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's a bigger priority.
I agree. Well, I think you could paint a step on the bleachers. I thought about this too.
They should have at least a railing and steps to walk.
It would be nice, yeah. So maybe the boosters could do that.
Oh, God, please don't go there. Then you're gonna affect our seating and then you're gonna affect our terminate names and.
Something for another.
Well, I understand our neighbor in the south had to put stairs in because of a fall and potential losses.
Yeah.
So we gotta.
We need new bleachers, is what we need, period. That's what I'd like to see. And then, then I will start writing the.
Take these for these.
Well, the special ed.
There we go, there we go.
Put it in the elevator.
Getting back to the, yeah.
To work.
Budget comparisons, I've done this every month up to this point in time. Back in 2017, at the end of December, we were about forty-one, just a little over forty-one percent spent out in the budget. If you look at this point in time, December of 2018, we're just over forty-two percent. So we're pretty close in line with how we're spending out our money from, in comparison from year to year. So I know, I know that's one of the things that Baird had said. If you're getting this updated on a regular basis, this does help kind of our credit rating as well, that you're up to date on kind of how we're doing in comparison from one year to the next. So we're pretty close to what we've done in the past from last year to this year as far as our budget spend out.
And also bonds have actually gone down from what they were there up late.
Let's hope, let's hope it continues that way. And.
It's steel too, it's gonna go.
Yeah, that would be, that would be the end of any reporting out that I would do. So you would need more shooting going to close session. I'm gonna go with you for a second.